Twelve fifty-nine. As soon as we have our commissioners on the line and the chair will be getting started.
Jose, once everyone gets on the line, the commissioners, you can go ahead and take it over for live streaming.
Thank you, Shanita.
Ron Fisher? Is Fisher there?
Yes, I'm here, Commissioner.
Elise, can you give me a call after today, after the?
Yeah, sure. That's no problem at all.
Elise, let me know when we have a quorum of commissioners.
Okay, so far you have four, so.
Name is Malloy.
Who is speaking?
This is Neil.
Hi, Mr. Albert, how are you?
I am doing well. How are you?
Doing wonderful. Happy holidays to you.
Happy holidays to you too. We're gonna get started real soon.
So Neil, you have Commissioner Slover, Commissioner Talaferro, Commissioner Strickland, and Commissioner Council on, I think we're waiting now on Commissioner Ortiz, Commissioner Van Gostrey, and Forrester and Valcheckio.
Say who's on again slowly.
Strickland, Council, Talaferro, Slover, and yourself.
Okay. Let's give folks a couple more minutes.
Okay.
Hello?
Yeah, Talaferro, we can hear you.
I was talking about the person that came on.
The person is Deborah Fraser.
Fraser?
Hi, who's that laughing?
Commissioner Talaferro.
Hi, Talaferro, we're gonna have a fun day today?
Yes, ma'am.
And we're gonna get some business done, that's what I said, yeah?
Okay.
All right, all right. When is everybody getting on?
You both open mics.
They hear you.
Who else is there? I'm gonna be alone with y'all. Who else is there?
I have tons of people coming to call in ever.
Hooray. Hello, Mr. Albert.
Name is Fraser. We're gonna get started in a minute. In fact, we'll get started now. We're just giving some additional commissioners, additional commissioners time to jump on. My apologies in advance, my computer malfunctioned this morning, so I'm working off of iPhone. However, I could see William Jordan's balding head clearly despite the technology challenges. So if you don't hear me well or see me well, it's blimmin' on Jordan. Well, let's get started. Good afternoon, everyone, and thanks for joining us this afternoon at our Board of Commissioners meeting. Today is Wednesday, December ninth, 2020, and I'm gonna call this meeting to order. This is our regular monthly meeting of the Housing Authority. And like we've been doing in the past, this meeting is being held via WebEx conferencing. The time is one oh five PM. I'm going to, as usual, request that if you're not speaking, if you can please mute your devices so that we can minimize feedback. As is our custom, I'm gonna ask that it's time for us to observe a moment of silence. Thank you so much. As I said earlier, this is our regular meeting. We've invited members of the public to sign up to speak via our website, or those of you who could view the meeting can do so by our Facebook Live link. And it's, I think that was shared earlier before the meeting. At this time, I'm gonna ask our Able Secretary, Anita McNear, to establish a quorum.
Thank you. Commissioner Strickland?
Present.
Commissioner Council?
Present.
Commissioner Talaferro?
Present.
Commissioner Ortiz-Gao?
Present.
Commissioner Slover?
Present.
Commissioner Van Gostrey? Commissioner Forrester?
Present.
Commissioner Valcheckio?
Present.
Chairman Albert? Unmute Chairman.
Oh, no, I unmuted and I said present.
Okay, thank you. You have eight commissioners present. You have a quorum.
Great. So first item on our agenda is the review and approval of the minutes of two meetings that we've had in November. We had a regularly scheduled meeting on November twelfth, and then we had an emergency board meeting on November twenty-third. The minutes have been posted to your board books. At this time, I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second. All is in favor, all board members in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Great, the ayes have it. Next, we will have our Executive Director's report, Mrs. Garrett.
Thank you, Commissioners. Good afternoon to the Commissioners again, and good afternoon to the members of the public who are joining us. I'm going to throw up our presentation again for everyone, for the members of the public to know that these presentations are also uploaded to our website after they're presented to the Board of Commissioners. So we'll continue. And one thing I do want to also point out about the board report that it offers, a combination of COVID and current updates over the last thirty days of the, what's going on at the agency. Some things are constant and will continue while others do change during that period of time between board meetings where we had some new initiatives or issues have come up that need to actually be addressed. But at all points in times, it will revolve around these five pillars, the COVID response for now, my property operations and resident services, our development and capital projects, our stakeholder and community engagement, workforce technology, and other programs. Again, these are the performance goals for not only the DCHA, but also for the Office of the Executive Directors as presented by the Board of Commissioners. Just again, this is something that I just want to bring to the forefront, just to let everyone know that we're continuing with this particular partnership with United Medical Center and GW School of Nursing. Our mobile health clinic is still moving throughout our portfolios. From this slide, you can see the properties that we have already touched with COVID-19 testing along with primary and preventive care. Again, and general health screens. Again, this was meant to be originally a healthcare initiative which just dealt with general health screens. That was the whole goal of the partnership. But as COVID-19 started to evolve and the pandemic hit us, we moved into this realm. And we truly appreciate the support and service from United Medical and GW because of what they do for us. So as you can see, the December schedule, we still have two more dates in December that will be hitting Greenleaf tomorrow and on Friday. And then we'll continue to serve service properties as we move forward. This information, as you can see from the flyer, is distributed via social media and also to each property as we move through. Those health screenings also are going to be administered by Howard University, although they're gonna start not until January twenty-one, and their process is gonna be a little bit different. Their process with Howard University College of Medicine is going to be stationary, meaning that they're gonna, we've identified locations at our properties within Ward One where they will be administering the same type of programs being administered by the mobile unit, general health screenings, primary and preventive care, behavioral health services, and COVID-19 testing. Property management operations, this is the season of giving, and at any point in time, we are always doing turkey and care packages, deliveries and distributions to our residents, especially our senior population. What is different this particular year is that we've really tried to partner with our resident councils and our ANC and other community representatives to help us assist residents during Thanksgiving month, November, and also moving into the month of December as Christmas rolls around. So we did distribute care packages with PPE along with other items. Let's not forget that we made the donation of grants to several resident, to all of our community, resident community, resident councils at all of our properties, in addition to some other stakeholder organizations to distribute staples that residents may need, including PPE and other items that they might, and cleaning supplies while they move through the pandemic. We wanted to make sure that they have everything, but realizing and recognizing that the Housing Authority alone can't do everything. So we needed to engage other partners, and those resident councils were vital in helping us address some issues with residents directly. And for those organizations that were not able to be receptive to our grant, the Housing Authority itself and my team went ahead and made those distributions ourselves. We're still engaging because children are in a learning environment, and we have so many youth that need educational support. We're still continuing, as much as we possibly can, our collaborations with the School of Nursing at GW along with the Good Project over at the Southwest Enhancement Center. We're trying to keep these type of programs moving forward, STEM programs, and also a book distribution to residents and to their student, their, you know, age, student-age children throughout the complexes. One other piece, you can see from one picture, the Southwest Enhancement Center served as a learning hub for this district where we had children from that particular community come to the Southwest Enhancement Center throughout the day to receive virtual learning, a virtual learning experience. With PMO, we had backed off of our, and this is for the public at large, we had backed off of doing routine work orders and only selected emergency work orders since the month of March. Beginning in October, we went back to dealing with routine work orders, first working off of our backlog and then working up to current work orders that might be, that might be coming about. As you can see, from mechanical operations, four hundred and thirteen work orders in the month of November, that stems from being the heating system. And although we do service hospitals and running prior to, we probably encountered some issues and some problems, but those were the work orders that we actually were able to address. We will be ramping up a little bit more in doing work orders throughout the properties and for residents, but keep in mind, we're still in the midst of the pandemic and there are protocols which we must take. That being the case, we'll continue with our process of contacting a resident prior to any of our employees entering a unit to do an emergency and/or routine work order. If we feel as though it's an unsafe environment, we will contact a contractor who has the proper equipment to come in and perform the work order without subjecting themselves to any type of danger. Our relocation team is still working with the residents at Park Morton and also Sibley Townhomes supporter on their relocation efforts. The one thing I want to mention that I didn't mention previously was that during this particular time in this season, it tends to die down just a little bit with relocation efforts because it is the holiday season and people don't like to move around as much when this occurs. So what we try to do is tamper it down just a little bit during the holiday and ramp it right back up in the first of the year after New Year's. So that's probably gonna, you're gonna see that in terms of our numbers as we start to report out in 2021. We started bringing people back to the Arthur Capra Center. As you can see, two former Arthur Capra residents have actually returned back to the new building, and we have nine former public housing residents who have now relocated from their, from their public housing unit that was on site throughout the district to the new building. Camera upgrades are going on and have been a hundred percent completed. As we said, we'll put that on a schedule so all of you on the Board of Commissioners and also the community can see exactly what we're doing in terms of camera upgrades throughout the entire portfolio, not just a select sites. Development and stakeholder engagement, we're continuing with it. Again, we've heard so much from the Board of Commissioners and also from the public and the other stakeholders that we don't engage or we're not engaging the public enough in terms of redevelopment and rehabilitation efforts of the DCHA. That being said, we have really ramped up our ability to use virtual technology to engage our residents with engagement. And that's the big piece about this. Communication is key. An example would be that we did hold a meeting via the internet on, just yesterday, with the Kennelworth Courts residents, talking about where their redevelopment effort stands. If you aren't aware, we've already started demolition over at Kennelworth and moving towards actual reconstruction, new construction, hopefully sometime in the spring. So that project is moving forward. Greenleaf, the Greenleaf redevelopment update is going to be taking place tomorrow. That is an open meeting with all of the residents who are impacted by the development team. And so what's gonna happen there is they're gonna be introduced to the development team formally after, since the board has made its developer selection and partner selection last month. And we've started to move that full steam ahead to engage not only the residents but the other stakeholders. I believe we have a meeting set up with the Resident Advisory Council, Greenleaf Resident Advisory Council, in the coming weeks also. And one thing I want to say about those meetings, those will be standing meetings. That's the roadmap that we're gonna actually utilize. There is gonna be standing monthly meetings with residents along with quarterly meetings with other stakeholders. So no one's ever gonna have to ask, when is the meeting? They'll know that if it's the third Wednesday of the month, they'll know that that meeting takes place third Wednesday of the month at this particular time. And that's how we're going to move forward with all of our redevelopment opportunities at other sites, including anything that we might do along the lines of relocation also. So that's going to be the mode of operation for us now. Another form of communication that we are unveiling today is our new podcast. The first topic is going to be transformation plan efforts and updates. So we're gonna be talking about our portfolio, you know, and we're gonna be talking about exactly how we're gonna be moving forward with possible redevelopment and rehabilitation throughout the District of Columbia Housing Authority. We want people to listen through various social media platforms. We're also figuring out a way to be able to upload the same platform to our website so people can access it. And we'll be doing additional podcasts in the future on various topics. So if the residents that are listening right now or just tuning into this particular board meeting have ideas about what they want to hear us talk about, we will create a podcast for it, especially those burning questions that you may have. We can set up something where we can create a podcast, create some type of communication that will be able to be sent out to everyone. One other piece I want to also note, Commissioners, is that in our senior lobbies now, we have monitors, and what we're gonna be doing is using PSAs in those monitor, on those monitors in those senior lobbies with information about the Housing Authority, things that we're doing in addition to anything that might be COVID-related. Our return to work is where, we're still at about, I'm gonna say roughly, you know, ninety percent of our workforce is doing one or two things, working remotely and/or being essential and coming in. So we are continuing along that particular path. We haven't led up since COVID hit. We took a minute, a couple of weeks to get up to speed, but we are full steam ahead. We're still doing online recruitment for, you know, any positions that we may need. Obviously, we needed new police officers and security officers to come onboard. So those eleven individuals will be fully onboard with our agency before the end of this year. We still have a couple more weeks to go for them to be fully, fully trained. Our workforce is definitely continues, and it's expected that it'll be completed and we'll be able to report out to the board in February twenty twenty-one at our next board meeting. Migration of our software technology system, as I pointed out last month, and was told to you by our consulting team, that data is very important, and we need to ensure that every department is working off of the same page of music. So that being said, this migration of our software system is very important, and we also want to make sure that we fix all the bug things. So one department is looking at the same number of units that PMO might be looking at from time to time. Camera installation, that's a big piece for us. So we went through our ten properties, and we have ten properties listed here, but there was also additional cameras that we put up. And I just want everyone to be aware of that. There were also about two hundred and forty-nine additional cameras that were already set for an upgrade prior to these ten properties being put on the list. And I know from the Board of Commissioners that we want to try and identify exactly how we move through that particular process of upgrading not only these particular cameras, but how we move and look to the future of using our capital fund to upgrade additional cameras throughout the portfolio. Now, the big piece of it is from that camera installation, this gave us an opportunity, something that I wanted to do from the time that I came onboard at the, at the agency. I wanted to create a system where the cameras could be viewed from anywhere, meaning that I can look at those cameras that are set up on my phone or on my iPad or on my PC from anywhere in the country or anywhere in the world, and that was very important to me. So these cameras that you see behind me are all web-based, meaning that I can pick them up at any point in time. It's a secure website and portal, but the individuals who have access can look at the cameras, and that would definitely be our OPS department. And the piece to the puzzle, the big piece to the puzzle, that the OPS department is able to do that and view many of our cameras throughout our portfolio from this particular new room that we created. This room was created as a command center for the DCHA to utilize in times of an epidemic like what we're dealing with and/or any type of emergency response that's necessary. We now have a room built and equipped to be able to handle such an issue or such a situation. But in addition, this particular room is also created for social distancing based on the CDC guidelines or ideas that they have for how we stem down transmission of disease between employees. So socially-distanced type of situation here, similar to that of our Customer Solutions Center, but this is definitely for the OPS department, and it's our new command center at eleven thirty-three, our eleven thirty-three headquarters. We have over four thousand, just wanna say, we have over four thousand cameras placed throughout the portfolio that now live stream to this command center. It's our hope that what that will do will help enhance our public safety and make us more visible to you and to the general public. Again, our season of giving, the big piece about this is that we were able to raise forty-three thousand dollars since October. And so we'll use that funding to, we use some of that funding to do those mills for residents, purchase PPE and other staples, and we'll use another portion of that money to provide ten thousand toys, to ten thousand toys and winter coats to our youth and the families as we always have. The setup will be different this year than what we've done in the past, but it will still be effective, and we'll make sure that every individual family that we can touch with what we have and the resources that we have will be done between now and the end of the year. And also, if you know of anyone that's still willing to give, please ask them to donate to our PayPal account, paypal.me, Community Visioning. In December, we did something new. I said to Commissioner Slover earlier that I'm in the mode of mergers and acquisitions now. This is part of a process that I, a blueprint that I use many times, or have used in the past. Parkway Overlook, which was a property that was developed by the DCHA as a sole-source type of self-development project. They had a third-party manager that took on the responsibility of leasing up and managing the property over the last year. I didn't feel that they were doing the best job on behalf of the residents that they were serving. And in that vein, I evoked the opportunity to contact the equity investor and ask that that team be removed and the DCHA PMO department be placed in that role. So now we're actually managing that particular property. And what we get from that is that now we have capacity, which everyone always talked about, the ability of the DCHA to manage low-income tax-ready properties, and we do have that ability now. And the reason we have that ability is because two years ago, we started hiring and ensuring that employees that we brought onboard would be able to take on this particular task. So when asked that question, do you have capacity? We were able to clearly say we have the clear team onboard, able to manage low-income tax-ready properties at a high level. And this equity investor that we have taken over or asked permission from, Ross Farb, one of the largest affordable housing equity investors throughout the nation. In addition, we continue to train because this is a method that I want to continue and give us the opportunity to do more as we develop or rehabilitate properties using the low-income tax-ready program. So that seventy employees right now took an examination, we're waiting for the results, and from that, we'll be put in a position where we can do more as we go forward as a sole-source type of entity with the ability not only to develop properties with ourselves and with development partners, but also manage properties by ourselves or with other partners. Active public safety presence, and what we can do is, we can probably just jump to the next one for the public. Now, what we have done here is we are now using an automated system for tracking our public safety department throughout the portfolio. And what I mean by that is, what you see in front of you is a, an analysis, a simulation of what we've done at several of our properties through this pilot program. So you have your handheld phone. The DCHA OPS officers have a handheld phone with an app. That app that is on their phone is monitored by these circles and these dots that are pinpointed right here on this particular property, meaning that an officer would have to, officer would have to go to these particular points on the property in order for it to register, and they're required to do so during their tour and during their shift. Idea is to make sure that it hit all the parts of the hotspots. Now, this is just a simulation. What we did not do is identify for the public what those hotspots look like on any given property, and that is one, to prevent anyone from being prepared for an officer, but also we want to make sure that the officer, in addition, we want also to make sure our public safety officers are protected and are safe as they start to make their tours. But this is a really great tool for us. We'll be using it in real time. I think, Kay, go to the next. It is real time. And what I mean by real time is, at any point in time, I can look on my phone or my desktop and identify what officer has touched what particular property at what time. And from that, we are able to really enhance our technology opportunities. So at the end of the day, AWD allows our OPS personnel to perform specific location checks. That's really important at various properties throughout our portfolio. And I want to stress, it is not the officer or OPS personnel cannot just drive by a particular location and then be picked up. That officer and the team have to physically be outside of their vehicles. That means they're gonna be visible to the public, they're gonna be visible to our residents and to anyone that may be out at that particular time. They're gonna see us move throughout the properties, and the way we monitor that is through this particular app. This app also helps us report out to you as the public, to the OAG, and also to our Board of Commissioners. And it also gives us data on our personnel as to where there might be issues or problems that we need to actually deal with that are of a higher caliber or higher nature, where there might be elements of higher crime. Kay, go to the next one. So this is an example. You'll see where, you know, over the last few months, we've had an increase in crime in areas of James Creek and Carroll Apartments and Sifex Gardens. So what you'll see from this particular slide is that we've made a lot of emphasis on making sure that we had property checks at these particular properties. So these are, if I have nine property points, nine checkpoints at one particular property, they don't count nine eighteen. It doesn't work that way. What this is, nine checks for nine points at one particular property equal one check. What this is, nine checks for nine points at one particular property equal one check. So, um, during this timeframe, we've had 88 checks by various officers at James Creek, um, 71 at Carroll Apartments. And what chief does is, I, I am not a law enforcement officer, but we've had discussions about what he does is based on crime, the crime element throughout our properties and our portfolio, we redirect, um, our officers and our impact team to these particular sites. Okay, so this is just another, uh, another total, um, and screenshot of exactly where we are um, with OPS, um, touching properties throughout our portfolio. And again, uh, much of this information is going to be uploaded. Now, we're also, we're also going to use AWD for PMO. And the way it's going to work with PMO is to help and assist us support our efforts in cleaning various buildings, um, and also doing various tasks throughout our portfolio and through our property. So we're in a training effort, um, uh, with our PMO staff right now, our maintenance teams. And so they're going to have the same setup, um, touchpoints at each particular property to ensure that, that there has been an actual cleaning or work done, um, in a particular location. That way, when we hear that something hasn't been done, we can go to the app, we can go to and generate a report to identify how many times we actually touched that particular property and whether or not, um, it was done to, uh, to the, to our satisfaction. Um, this is one way to create a metric that we can follow, um, to ensure that we're being held accountable. But it also gives some support to my staff who are working on a daily basis, who are doing their task, um, as diligently and as, as they possibly can on behalf of the residents. And sometimes, um, it, they don't necessarily feel as though, um, that's supported. So I took this step to try and say, if we utilize this particular mechanism, when we're approached or when we're confronted with, you know, questions of whether or not we've done our job, I'll have actual data to support our position, um, that we have done so. So you'll see, so just go back. I'm sorry, Jose, just go back real quick. So throughout the properties, you're going to start to see, um, this particular, um, QR code. Yeah, I get all confused. I'm not technology, I'm technology challenged sometimes. Um, you'll see this QR code throughout the properties, um, where our employees have to actually go by to have to hit with their phone. Um, and they're, they're actually enthusiastic about it, but you'll see these various signs being put up, um, at, at many of our properties for our, our team. And again, I'll have the ability, um, just like anyone else to, to remotely access um, and track exactly what the staff is actually doing. Um, and leadership will also have that same, um, same ability to do so. Um, and we're going to use the same, this, um, system, um, to enhance it. We talked about map it, snap it, um, text it. Um, that's going to be another form of, another opportunity to actually for residents to participate, um, in use of technology to alert us to issues and work orders within their building or at their sites. So from that, Mr. Chair, if anyone has any questions, um, I'll try my best to answer them at this point in time.
Uh, thank you so much, Mr. Director. Again, if you're not speaking, if you can just, uh, put your device on mute, Aquarius, if you can mute Jose Tyrone, that will, that will help with our feedback issue. Um, any questions from any of our commissioners? I, I can't see you. I, I will just call your name and if you are interested in, uh, asking a question, please do. So, Commissioner Strickland, any questions from you?
Uh, my only question, uh, and thank you for that report, uh, Director Garrett, um, was on the, the new app and, um, and the public safety. Are there checks and balances that are in there? Uh, you don't have to put them on the open, but, but I'm hoping that there's checks and balances just so there's no way that any of our folks, uh, could sort of cheat the system in a way. Mute, Director Garrett.
Director Garrett.
Got it, got it. Sorry, sorry. I was just saying, that was my point of making, uh, the point that I made about not being able to drive by with a vehicle. Um, that would be the way that you could possibly cheat the system, but you cannot do it with what we have. There's, the only way you can do it is to physically walk into that checkpoint, um, with your phone.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Slaver.
Uh, I also appreciate the, uh, the report and just, just to echo, uh, to get on the record, a request from earlier, just to, you know, it's a pretty robust camera operation that we're rolling out. Just want to make sure we understand, um, how it's being rolled out and, uh, the depth of it and how it's being paid for. I look forward to, uh, getting that report, uh, hopefully in the beginning of the year. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I saw one question pop up by Commissioner, I'll check you out.
Yes, you can.
I'd like to answer right away.
Commissioner Von Gassary is going to have to have a question. I thought Commissioner Neil Albert said that he would call commissioners out, then we'll respond.
Commissioner Von Gassary, I'm going to call you. Uh, this is a question for, from Commissioner, I'll, I'll check you. Um, Executive Director, can you read a question and then answer it? Tyrone?
I have to, I'm sorry, commissioners, I have to take myself off of two different devices for mute. So I apologize, let me. His basic question, commissioners, were, was about, um, MPD having access to the camera system. And yes, they do have access to the camera system. Since this is web-based, um, if they so choose, they can have access, um, and be able to utilize the, the system as they see fit. So, um, there is that cooperation between the two entities.
Great. Uh, Commissioner Council?
No, it was answered, my questions were answered in brown bag. I have none.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Ortizgo? Jose? Let's come back to Jose. Commissioner Talafaro? Any questions?
I'm having another right now. All my question was answered like, um, at the other barbed.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Talafaro. Uh, Commissioner Von Gassary?
Uh, several questions. Unfortunately, I couldn't find the PowerPoint, so, and I was multitasking. So I'm going to generalize my questions. One, in the report, how effectively did the report impact on either new communities? How did, uh, we, um, the report impact on maintenance versus what is constitute emergency maintenance in a COVID-19 maintenance? Here's an example. Um, it's a known fact then, in most of, um, in most of the rad engagement communities, and be specific where I can give you numbers is where I'm the president of Atomi Gardens, there's a vacancy rate. And within this vacancy rate, how does that impact residents who already have unit problems? Like they need new stoves or the, um, overhead of their stove is falling down? What constitute an emergency? And what constitute fixing a non-emergency problem that could lead to a lawsuit? Um, I'm going to wrap it up in a nutshell where I can, and I also want to know, on all of these projects in which we spoke about, how many of my constituents under, um, DCHE were assigned to any of the projects? Were there any other apprenticeship, um, graduates or previous graduates assigned to any of the projects? And how many union employees were on any of these projects whatsoever? And were they incorporated in the plan? And the final, um, my final statement is an insult to me when I chaired the Resident Service Resident Initiative Committee along with Operation. And I've asked numerous occasion to be forwarded, uh, a link to any of the engagements. I never get any. I haven't. And I asked that at the last meeting. I am going to ask this again. Whether or not I will have the opportunity before I leave this board to be able to attend some of these meetings. Not that I want to speak, but I would like to have the results in order to be a part of my meeting when I leave this board and do a report.
Thank you, Commissioner. Uh, Tyrone, can you respond quickly?
I, I just want to make sure that, Jose, let's make sure that all the commissioners have access to whatever meeting schedule that we've created and, and the links for those meetings so they can participate, um, and listen in, okay?
Sure, thanks, sir. I sent the Greenleaf invite to them yesterday, so.
Okay.
I don't have, like you stated that Greenleaf is having a meeting.
Yes, and that was.
Not only am I a commissioner of Greenleaf, but I'm also an impact of, of the alumni of the resident commission, of the resident councils in Ward Six. I don't even have a, um, invitation to that.
That invitation was sent to you yesterday, Commissioner.
Okay, I'm gonna check my, I'm gonna check my email right now, sir.
Jose, can you just forward it again?
Sure.
Thank you. Commissioner Slaver, you had an additional question?
There were a couple of other questions that she had. I, I could answer them or do you want me to do it offline, Mr. Chair?
It's her preference.
Well, first of all, my preference is, I'm having technical difficulties. Um, by the time I made my statement, I'm no longer visible online, but I'm glad that you can hear me.
So Tyrone, why don't you have a call, a conversation with Commissioner after this meeting?
I agree with that.
Thank you so much. Uh, Commissioner Slaver?
Following question on the cameras. Did we ever look into, the city has a rebate program available for purchase of cameras? I understand we have purchased a lot of cameras, but is that something we ever looked into in getting payback since the DC has access to it? Since you, if you give them access, you can apply for a rebate.
Yeah, you know what, Commissioner Slaver, I didn't, I didn't think of that. I think originally my understanding was that rebate was for those, um, Ring-type cameras. I never thought until you mentioned that possibly, you asking whether or not our cameras qualify, but we will, we will just.
I don't, yeah, I'm looking on their website. There's no distinction between camera type. It's just Sam's camera system.
Hello?
Dollar.
Okay. I didn't think, I didn't think of that. I, I didn't think of that, um, but we will, we will investigate.
John could just, just check right away, I think, if he wanted to.
Um, John, did you want to respond or did you have an additional question? Guess not. Commissioner Forster?
You repeated, I was having a little bit of trouble.
No, um, do you want to respond to Commissioner Slaver's question about whether or not DCHA, uh, could get reimbursed for the cameras it bought through the mayor's camera program?
Oh, that's interesting. Uh, we can follow up on it. Um, trying to think about multifamily housing, how they approach it. I know we have it for both residential, we have it for religious, but let me see. And the other thing is there may be some HCMA funding available, which is separate from that program. So happy to kind of talk that through.
It says, uh, I think it says multifamily on the website, just something to look into.
Yeah, but the, the, just the, the limit on that is really low unless we consider each property. So that's what, that's why I say I have to walk through that.
Okay.
With the, with the team.
So maybe Laurie Barnes or someone can follow up with you? Or someone on your team, John? Thanks for that question, Bill. Uh, Commissioner Forster? Any questions? Or executive director?
No, no, it's not.
Uh, so for the general public, uh, today is, uh, Commissioner Forster's last, uh, meeting. Um, as you know, she represents, uh, labor on this, uh, body. Uh, we're going to miss her tremendously, um, but she will be replaced, uh, by Anne Hoffman, who is no stranger to DC, uh, and to some of us on this board. So Diana, we're going to, we're going to miss you, but we're happy that, uh, Anne is coming onboard. And I know you'll continue to do good work for, uh, the workers here in the District of Columbia. So thanks so much, uh, for your service.
Yes, thank you very much. I liked, enjoyed working with you.
Yes.
Thank you. Definitely miss you guys.
Thank you.
You won't miss us that much.
Great, so let's move on to our resolutions. Uh, actually, we only have one resolution today, which is one that would authorize the DC Housing Enterprises to make a deployment of $6 million, uh, in new market tax credits uh, to a secondary entity. Um, there's only one person that signed up to testify, uh, about this resolution and that's my friend Deborah Frazier. Uh, so Deborah, you have, uh, five minutes, uh, to testify on this resolution and then we'll move into the resolution.
Ms. Frazier, you can press star six, uh, to start speaking.
Hey, is, okay, so hi, this is Deborah Frazier. No, can I, I cannot comment because despite my repeated request, I do not have a copy of the resolution. So I'll reserve my comments and send it to the commissioners at a later date.
Great, and then, and then obviously after this meeting, you want to reach out to me uh, with additional comments, I'm happy to, uh, apply, so.
Okay.
Thank you. Uh, so let's move to the resolution. Yep. Who's that? All right, so I'm going to turn it over to Executive Director Garrett to, uh, run us through the resolution or whoever he designates and then, uh, we'll open it up to questions from the board and then go to a vote. Mr. Garrett?
Yes, thank you, Commissioner, Mr. Chair. Um, Resolution 2021, um, will be, I'll get it started and then Merrick will, Merrick Malone will, will jump in, um, and close us out. Um, but to summarize, um, as you're aware, DHE is a subsidiary of the, um, DCHJ Housing Authority. Um, it is also in contact with numerous, um, process programs. And one of those programs is to administer a new market tax credit allocation um, to developers within the District of Columbia for various projects that are beneficial to the community. Um, in doing that, our allocation must be spent, um, in a timely fashion and we have a, a, a closeout date of December 31st in this year, I believe. Um, we have to close out our allocation. Um, we supported a particular project here in the District of Columbia with an allocation of $6 million, but that allocation, um, did not fill a particular gap. And the way the program works, um, is if you're unable to allocate all of your dollars within the given timeframe, um, you are not eligible. Or if you do apply in the future years, um, you would not be funded. So, um, the way the program works is you get a full allocation and you extend that allocation over the course of about three years in full to various redevelopment projects that enhance the community. And when you do so, if you're down to zero, you have a better chance of asking for additional allocation. Um, in our particular instance, um, the development team that we were supporting financially on, on a particular deal, um, cannot fill, uh, additional budget gap. That being said, what DHE has asked and is coming to the board, um, at this point in time is to allow, um, its entity to, um, allocate $6 million in new market tax credits to a redevelopment project outside of our jurisdiction, meaning that it would not be within the District of Columbia. Um, and the reason that we asked to have the ability to do that is because, um, many of the dollars that we utilized and would like to utilize in the future would again go to district projects, as Merrick will point out in his quick, in his, um, short presentation. Um, and we want to continue that effort. This is a nuanced case based on COVID, based on some of the irregularities that have happened this year, um, with the financial market and, um, development market, um, that put us in this particular position. Um, but I'm happy that we able, we were able to find a particular project that does enhance the community and in, in turn, um, will allow us to continue our program locally. So Merrick, uh, please just.
So, so the, uh, as Mr. Garrett pointed out, we've allocated over the course of this program, $122 million of new market tax credits for a tremendous amount of really good projects, uh, throughout the District of Columbia. You see, and because of our success, we received, um, $45 million in allocation for 2016. We have allocated all of those, 39 million we, we allocated within two years of the program. We retained the $6 million for the Strand Theater project, which we had brought to the, to the board. Um, the two, two, which was a, a good project, it's a read adapted use of the Strand program, of the Strand Theater, rather, uh, which was to have a restaurant and it was to have, um, be a musical venue and a community center. We all agreed it was a really good project to invest in. Um, so we, 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 we then, after we agreed that we were going to do this, we then, uh, sought the investment. And what happens when you do that of the $6 million, it, it starts a clock that requires the project to be closed within a, in a period of a year. And this started for us in June of, of, uh, of, uh, 2019. When we started to look in May, as we got closer to that time, um, the, the Strand Development Team, which was the National Housing Partners, were not able to close, they still had a gap. Now generally, we would then have moved to another one of the projects that we. Now generally, we would then have moved to another one of the projects that we were looking at in the District of Columbia, and we did look at several. We looked at the, um, the Children's Hospital site, we looked at Walter Reed, the Martin Luther King Plaza Phase Two, Breath for the City of Phase Two, because we had had such success. And because, and we even revisited the Strand, but they were experiencing the, the rabidities, I would say, of COVID because the financial markets were fluid and they began to change. For example, the Strand Development Team, while they were waiting for gap funding, they lost their historical tax credits because you have to place those credits in service within a year. A certain amount of time, and if you don't do that. So, so this, so what happened is, this $6 million that we have to allocate, we have to do it. And allocate it to a project that can close by the end of the year, quite frankly now, to preserve our own project. We, there, we would, if we're not able to do it, we would trigger what is called a, a recapture. And if you fail to deploy, that was essentially, that recapture would actually terminate our program, which we'd been so successful with. What it does is ultimately, it would deny our ability to get future tax credits. We would also have liability financially as a result of it. And then more importantly, we also have an application that is pending for additional new market tax credits for projects that we would be looking for in, to do in the district, as we've done all of our projects in the past that have been here. One of the things we're entitled to do under the new market tax credit regulations is that we are able to allocate to a qualified community development enterprise, which we have in the District of Columbia in Renaissance Equity Partners, which is a district-based minority-owned small business that's done over a billion dollars in transactions, and they have worked with us during our transaction. So we have a, a partner, a qualified partner, and we asked them to scour the nation to see what the, whether there was an eligible project that, that fit all of our criteria, that we were, the same criteria that we were using in the district, that we could allocate these, the remaining $6 million, because recapture was just not, it's not an option. And so we were able to locate a project that is in South Central Los Angeles. And I, and, and, and we will be able, and that can close by the end of the year, which would preserve our program and allow us to seek additional allocations for projects in the district, like we have always done. So the, the Martin Luther King Hospital Junior Community Center in South Central is, is a, it, it fits every criteria. In fact, if this project was in the District of Columbia, we would very much want to invest in it because it is, it's, it's a community hospital and it's providing all kinds of different services for the demographic that we would seek here in the district. It will, and, and so therefore, in order to preserve our program, in order to avoid the penalties, and we, we, we want to close with that particular deal by allocating to the, our, our last remaining $6 million. I might add that we would, when we went back to the Strand Development Team, because the market had changed, they had a gap that, that required them to have $9 million worth of tax credits, which we didn't have. Although what we had indicated is that, and wanted to see whether in fact we could give them our $6 million and they could find $3 million somewhere else and be able to close by the end of the year, that was not the case. So that is, we, we tried every effort to do that. So in this case, we're asking for this permission to do this, to preserve our program, so that we can continue to receive allocation. I would always say it's, it's not anybody's fault. I mean, obviously, we made these available to the development team. What, what happened in terms of COVID, a lot of these, the market deals, just of these deals went, you know, have had trouble getting financing and therefore not being able to close. And, and that, that just really what, what, what has happened. So that's what we're asking the, the board to allow us to do. Thank you.
Thank you. So let's open it up for question, if you guys can take the slides down. Let's, Commissioner Slaver?
Uh, I, I, I appreciate the, the presentation, and it sounds like you guys found a, a good solution to, uh, to, to, to a problem, to, to resolve the issue. In earlier conversations, I just want to put this on, on the public record and see if you guys as DCHE could sort of take this as an opportunity to think about expanding the program. You know, I was on the board of DCHG in 2010 when this program was onboarded. And the purpose of the program was first and foremost to generate extra income for the authority to support both the work of DCHG and also to, to reduce some of the support of DCHA. And so if we could take this as an opportunity to look at expanding the program, not necessarily constraining ourselves to projects within the district, but also look at projects with outside the district if we get a bigger allocation as a result of that, I would encourage the DCHE board to take a look at that.
Thank you, Commissioner Slaver. That is certainly something worth considering, particularly given the circumstances in which we find ourselves. And as a member of the DCH board, we will take that. Commissioner Fauchek, you?
Yes, a question that I have is when does DCHG anticipate they would have their next round of allocation?
Commissioner, we have a, an application pending. We probably won't hear from that until the spring of 2021.
And do you have a, just to follow up on Commissioner Fauchek's question, do you have a sense as to the amount of credits you may receive, you could receive?
No, it, it's, we, we don't have it at this time. The, we've had allocations of 25, we've had allocations of 45. We seem, so, but we're not sure. We, we really don't know until they make that decision, how they parse that out, to see the, the treasury.
Chairman, but just for this one, as an example, what was the full allocation that we had? And I know there's $6 million left, but what was the full allocation we had in this round? And when did we receive this allocation?
Our, our full allocation in this round was, was $45 million, and we received that allocation in 2016.
And all, oh, so that was almost five years ago at this point?
Yes.
So, so why are we so confident that we'll have another allocation as soon as the spring?
Well, we're not confident. It's a very competitive program, Commissioner, but we are hopeful that we will get, receive allocation in the, in the spring. That will be awarded based on our application and our track record.
And I understand, you know, we may not want to sort of break this down in a, a public session because it's likely a matter of negotiation, but I am interested in understanding how we came to, you know, standstill on this district project. And if there's any way to overcome that hurdle, even in these closing days of the year.
Merrick?
I'm, I'm, I, I, at the standstill, at the, at the standstill, I, I guess it's, it, you have to discuss. We'd have to get in the room with the development team of how it's just to remember, we make these available when the development team can actually close. And we can't deploy or put them in service until the development team is actually put together, pull together its financing to be able to move forward.
When is the latest that the project in South Central Los Angeles can be notified of the availability and still be able to close?
We actually had to, we have, we have, we have notified them that we were in a, with moving forward. And they have lined up on their side. We're, they're kind of waiting for us. Again, it, it is, it is about a five to six week process that we have condensed when you start making closing calls for the new market tax credit. And certainly, I have, it, it, that's the kind of lead time you need. And when we even tried to pivot, we were already in a very short timeframe.
So if you need five or seven weeks, or, I don't understand how you would close before the end of the year.
Well, we actually had them start, when we found and identified the, the group, the, the potential, we had asked them to at least line up on their side while we tried to move forward. Because the, the risk to us at losing the program, we've kind of got it condensed as much as possible. And we, we kept this, we looked at the local projects that we had longingly to see if in fact they could actually close. And, and they, and they couldn't close before the end of the year. And I don't think, I don't think we wanted to risk our program, particularly when we can come back with allocations and, and with a potential of getting more allocations in the future. It's, it's not, and, and we have held this $6 million for, actually when we started, that we held it out for almost two years.
Well, at this point, I think we're almost at the finish line with that project. We are, you know, moving forward on the residential, we have some of our residents moving there. It would be good to have jobs and amenities right next door. So I really, that's why I question, when is the latest that we can signal to the Los Angeles project? Which I'm sure is a very meaningful project, that these are available and that we could utilize them there while giving the DC project, you know, one final look.
Commissioner, we looked at the DC project, I think as late as the middle of November. And everybody wants to do the Strand, I want to do the Strand, we want to do the Strand. There is a gap that, that we've been advised that they have, that they can't fill in a timely manner. And what I've also said to them, because of the way new market tax credits work, that if they weren't ready to close and couldn't close, certainly we, because of the way we're doing the applica, what we're doing to save our program in LA, there are other entities that may have new market tax credits that we can apply to help them, help the development team at the Strand seek.
Implying that there might be another source before we get our allocation of these tax credits from another entity?
It could be.
In order, and what are those sources? What, what entities are we in conversation with now in order to help solve for the Strand?
We, we have not started those. We've been focused on trying to preserve the, the program that we had. But certainly, once we do that, we would certainly be willing to help and assist the development team to be able to procure tax credits from other qualified CDFI.
Maybe the group that helped us place this could help, could help.
Correct, correct.
This is not our business, but they, we could put them in touch with someone.
Which we've offered to do.
And Merrick, didn't we do that previously? Leading up to this particular point, we had tried to identify other entities to even fill the gap for us?
Yes, we did, we did. So I filled the gap for the development team.
For the, I'm sorry, for the developer, yes. So. And did you know, Merrick, whether or not, whether or not any of those entities that we went to before have any remaining funding?
You know what, I, I'm not sure. I know we went to one and it indicated that they, they didn't have, that they had allocated all of their, the ones we chose, they had indicated we, that they had allocated all of their tax credits. But there are others out there that I'm sure may still have some available. You know, and we, again, we offered to the development team that we would help them if, when, when they were ready to actually close.
I wish I had.
Standing this correct?
More time, excuse me?
I'm sorry.
No, if I could just close that, I just wish I had more time in order to try to address this, knowing that the time is running out. I'm also not clear exactly when is the drop dead that we have to tell the Los Angeles project. Still from your answer, I'm not clear when we have to tell them, if we have more time to go back to the table with the team from the Strand. This is a project that folks have worked on for years and years. We're at the finish line. And to move the finish line to Los Angeles at this point.
What does at the finish line mean? I'm not sure I understand what at the finish line means.
Okay.
In order to address whatever gap, to get the final financing in place, in order for the project to move forward.
The challenge with that, Commissioner, is that then you, you have to start closing calls, you have to do, there are a number of things that have to happen.
Well, Los Angeles would have to start that process now as well.
Well, Los Angeles has kind of started that process. I mean, if they don't.
Started that process, and that's what I am concerned about, the, the wherewithal that we put behind actually coming to an agreement with the DC project because we had already told the LA project to get started. And so that's where my concern lies.
The LA project came to us recently that said they could use these particular tax credits. I mean, they were already, I mean, if they didn't get it from, they were trying to get this, to get to this, this point that we have.
Okay, so if, so if they're ready to close at any point, then why can't we take another week on this to check to see how we move forward the DC project before we ship these across the country?
Commissioner, if, if, if I may, and I apologize if I'm out of order, but, but this is Mike Schiffer. I, I've been representing DCHE in a couple of new market deals. And, and I think what might be helpful to your question is, is I really think there are two components here. Is even if Strand could come together within the next week, in my judgment, there would be zero ability for that new market transaction to close by 1231. So even if, even if the financing and everything came together, I don't think that that transaction could close in the timeframe. I also think that the LA transaction is, is in some respects unique in the fact that it may be able to be closed as quickly as it can. I frankly was somewhat pessimistic before I learned more about it. There's a few unique aspects about this transaction that make it possible to get it done by the end of the year. But, but, but only possible if we start moving quickly now. Aspects of that transaction are that it's a very experienced participant in the new market program, so they know what they're doing. Two, they were already lining up some new market credits, so they were kind of ahead of the game before we got involved. So, so much of the diligence and all of that is already lined up. And, and, and three, it's not a real estate project as the Strand would be. And therefore, it lessens both the diligence that's needed as well as the timeline that's needed to close. So, so get out of there.
And I don't want to, you know, capitalize anymore of the time, but I know Commissioner Strickland had questions too, but so what is the use in the Los Angeles project?
It is the community, it's for the community hospital that they've got a really, and I, I put this in, that they're, they're creating an integrated healthcare delivery service in South Central to, to, that, for the underserved. It is a, they've got clinic, they're hiring clinic, additional clinicians, they're, they're improving their technology and their data storage. And, and their COVID expenses expanding, so they're, they're doing this. And like I said, Commissioner, if this were a project, a hospital, community hospital, and this same demographic and the same outcome was in the district, we would definitely invest in something like this.
And it would be supporting you 100%? The reason why I'm not sure if I'm supporting you today is because I don't think this will create a zero, this will create one job in the district, and it won't help one of our residents within the Housing Authority portfolio by sending these across the country. Unless you could give me an argument for why it does help our residents who live in the Housing Authority, or how it creates jobs here in DC.
Commissioner, I, as I said from the outset, this, if we do not close by the end of the year, we would, our program would, 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 would be effectively terminated. We would not have the ability, it's a, it's called a recapture. We would not have the ability to even. We would not have the ability to even get additional tax credits to allocate to the all of the projects that we have done historically. The hundred and twenty-two million in allocations that we've had all have been put into the district projects that that just like we, we all want to do the strand. Like I said, we wanted to do that. We held that open and held that out probably longer than we would have done any project, because that's how strongly we believed in it. But if we aren't, if we can't close this by the end of the year, we can forget getting any more tax credits. Because when the, it's like a default and the recapture would, and it also would jeopardize our pending application.
And and Merrick.
You're creating an additional six million dollar gap in the Strand project by shipping these across country. What I don't understand is how this helps us close the Strand project, put DC residents to work and to give amenities to residents who are going to be moving in next door to a project that we all support. And so there's a philosopher who has said that difficult takes a day, impossible takes a week. And I think we have to have that mantra and see how we take a little bit more time to see if there's any opportunity to get this closed.
So.
Commissioner, I would also say now, now where this is and is that the Strand, as I indicated you now, the gap that they needed has increased, had increased from, because when we said, or we went back to them as late as November and said, we've got the six million and and we were advised by the development team.
If it told me that you would work all the way up to this meeting and that in that in those, you're talking about last month. If you had told me that you worked all the way up to this meeting to try to come to an agreement with them, I'd be supportive. But as it stands now, with what you've laid out, I cannot be supportive.
We we have not heard any, we have not heard anything from the development team since we had these discussions relative to the gap of the nine million. I I I understand and I respect your position, Commissioner. I do agree and and I understand the dilemma. I think that obviously none of us wanted to have to do this. And we would have preferred to have done the project in the district. There's no question about it. But in order to save and preserve our program or to to live another day to be able to invest again, we have to close.
Merrick, you may want to, you may want to, you may want to also say how much DCHG is getting out of this. It's not a zero sum transaction where we're just donating tax credits to this entity in Los Angeles.
No, with as all of our tax credit deals, because they represent investments, we will generate, we will generate fees. But the most important aspect of this is the preservation of our program.
My my thing is, and I think.
What are the fees? Sorry, what are the fees that will be generated?
Well, we'll get, we will actually generate a hundred and eighty thousand at at closing. But then over the course of time for the the the, and and that'll be over the course of the seven year period, we will receive fees for servicing that particular project. Which is what we do for all, we do that, we receive those for all of our projects.
So give me an example of, or give me a ballpark of the annual fees that will be yielded by this transaction above and beyond a hundred and eighty thousand.
You know, I would have to, I'd have to look at that. I'd have to go back and look. I've been, I mean, it's it's it will be, I I I will have to go back and look at that, Commissioner. Because again, there'll be the, I'll I'll get that information. Because we've always, we generate fairly significant fees from these transactions, depending upon the size of the of the transaction. So I can get back to you with that.
Okay, I'm I'm just not sure if a hundred and eighty thousand dollars is worth it, even if we do get a, you know, residual income to not have worked up until this meeting in order to come to an agreement, to figure out a way to, you know, address what we needed to address. I just, I still, I still haven't heard an argument that would ask, you know, would make me be supportive of this measure.
Commissioner, I, again, I respect your opinion. I I do believe that you are familiar with the development team. And the development team has to has to work out the financing and funding before they can use our tax credits. We can't do their financing for them. We can provide the tax credits, which allow them to go and seek additional funding, which is what we've done to all our projects. But we certainly can't finance them. And we would be willing to do that, but we are out of time. We've held this open longer than I've probably, we fiscally should have done probably.
Well, I'm not asking to close the gap. I'm asking you not to pull the rug out from under the project. And that commissioners is what we would be voting to do. If you wanted to come back to us in a week, I'd be happy to participate in an emergency meeting in order to authorize this. But I I can't vote for this today.
We had an emergency meeting on November twenty-third and discussed this at length.
So let's, so Commissioner Silver, we'll come back to you. Let's go to Commissioner Strickland.
Yeah, no, I I was I was actually going to lean on that, what Commissioner Silver said, but not in a positive light. I know we had that discussion then. I I really want to know when was the the LA project kind of greenlit? Because I know you can't close by the thirty-first unless someone kind of promised you money's coming. And we as a board didn't vote to say yes or yay or nay on this situation. So I want to know, like, how are they able to close on the thirty-first, which is, you know, less than a month? You can't close on a condo in anywhere in America in in COVID right now in in thirty days. So how are they able to close unless they are assuming that this money is coming to them? Is my, is my thoughts on it?
Well, Mr. Mays, Mr. Mays?
Greg?
Yes.
Do you want to make sure you're following this? Because we had an emergency meeting on this very topic and this came up during that emergency meeting. What Mr. Mr. Strickland just talked about. So I want to make sure if we're not going to say anything in an open meeting, it's going to be problematic. I just want to make sure you heard his question.
I I haven't, I mean, this is, this is a deliberation. We did have the, we did have the emergency meeting and wasn't closed at this point, at that point in the emergency meeting and the previous brown bag, the discussion was had regarding the what the project was and what was needed and the timing. And so based on that, Merrick's team moved forward with with thinking to LA project, the LA deal. And so those particulars are what they are right right now at this point. As Mike said, the LA deal was further along in the transaction. And you're not talking about real estate, which will make the transaction more complicated.
And and.
This juncture, as this juncture, as as Merrick has indicated and the executive director has indicated, we're requesting that the board make the exception, allow DCHE to do the transaction outside of the district based on the circumstances.
Well, I'm asking if if the deputy mayor is is asking this, that we should table this for a week and come back to it. I'm in support of that. This jeopardizes our program. I mean, we've been told by the people who run our program.
Commissioner Silver, let me just go on to some of the other commissioners and we'll come back to you. Commissioner Von Gosery.
Am I on the music?
No, we can hear you.
Okay, first and foremost, Mr. Mr. Malone, are you still there?
Yes, I am.
First of all, would you tell me what is DCHE for the minutes, please?
It's the DC Housing Enterprise. I'm sorry, and we're a subsidiary, as Mr. Garrett pointed out, of DCHA.
We can't hear you.
We are the DC Housing Enterprises and we are a subsidiary of DCHA. And we administer and have been administering of the new market tax credits successfully since two thousand nine. And and as I indicated before, over the, we've allocated over successfully over a hundred and twenty-two million dollars in tax credits investment in the District of Columbia.
What is a subsidiary for the record, please?
What we're, we're an entity that is a wholly owned subsidiary, meaning an entity, corporation that is within the, under the DCHA umbrella.
How many members are there?
On the board?
That's correct.
Currently, there are four, I believe.
And would you name them, please?
Well, Commissioner, you're on the board. A Chairman Albert is on that board. And Eileen is, what's Eileen's name, is on the board and of course, Mr. Garrett and Mr. Garrett.
Are there any other resident commissioners on this board? Yes or no?
Commissioner, you're the only one.
How long have Commissioner Von Gosery been on this board?
I think you've told me thirteen years.
Can anybody follow up on that to make sure he's accurate? I just wanted the minutes to reflect that, because we constantly talk about boards and do not educate the public once again. I requested that when you represent Director Garrett and when you have the presentation, period, to always say, who is on the board, how long we've been on the board. It will give your audience and those listening who we are and it provides for our background when we communicate. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Commissioner, Commissioner Talafaro. Commissioner Ortiz.
Yes, let me ask you, if it's already in process to have this tax credit up in LA, what's a week? What's the, let's just kind of roll up our sleeves and take this week and see what we can do to make sure it stays here.
Can I ask one, Mr. Chair, may I ask one question in reference to this? Merrick, how does this impact the other transaction in Los Angeles, meaning that they end up, if if we don't, they're twofold, if we don't make the the timeframe, they would lose their opportunity to move forward with their project. Or if we redirect the money back to the district project, they would not be able to move forward with their 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 project also. It's twofold. Both could happen.
That 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 could potentially happen. That's correct.
Is there, is there another, is there a way that you could identify another source of six million dollars in a tax credit allocation to Los Angeles?
No, I I don't, I don't think so. Again, I I, the the the, I hear what everyone says, but I I the timeframe is if you're willing to risk the program, and I think that would be a good chance. We'd have to get all of the due diligence documents for for the transaction. I don't think any of that can be realistically, as you heard from our council, can be done in the timeframe that we're looking at. It's over the holidays and let's be really frank about this. We have waited for the development team to get gap financing for all, for a very long time. And again, I want to point out, our money is available and it's been there to be available. And the development team, for whatever reasons, and that was not able to put the financing together in a timely manner. We started talking to them about that in May of twenty, of 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 twenty, of of, actually, this is twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen. They had between twenty nineteen of May of twenty nineteen and May of twenty twenty to actually close. And that's the requirement. They've got, we got an extension from the, which is all of the, all of the CDFIs got an extension to the end of the year, to the end of the year. We sought another extension, hoping that we would get time and that did not occur. We have not gotten that. And I am, and I I I think it is, it is as as badly as I, and as and as much as I would have liked to have done this, the Strand project, and which we still would like to do. I think that the the time it took, by the time they got their gap financing, the market had changed on them. That it, they lost their historical tax credits, the fluidity of the market. And we were not, and then the gap, when I went back to them and said, look, can you use the six million? The gap was then nine million. And we even talked about finding, could you use our six to close by the end of the year, find three million in tax from another source? So we have not, we we, I I think there's this notion that we haven't been trying to 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 work with them to close this deal. But we got to a point where we were putting our entire program at risk.
I have one more question. This is for Mike. This is just, you know, from the transactional standpoint, having been involved in in some of these before. Mike, is it, is there possible to do a paper transaction, a dry closing, so to speak?
Yeah, that's one of the problems for the, for the program, the transaction must fully close. So you you had not only have to have it documented, but all funds have to.
Okay, so you knew where I was going, so, okay. Yeah, I would also say that you're, you're looking at days and I think people count days. You know, today's the ninth and you're talking about the thirtieth, but you you don't have that much time. Because you're losing days on on weekends and et cetera, the holidays. And it's simply, in my, in my opinion, my legal opinion, you don't have a week to to contemplate. If you don't start the process or continue the process, it's already begun. You won't be closing the LA deal.
Okay, thanks. So let's, let me hear from some honors and then I have a couple of questions. And then I think there are other people that have questions who already asked. So Commissioner Forrester, any questions from you?
No, not at this time.
Commissioner Council?
See both sides. I hear what John is saying and I hear what Merrick is saying. My question is, will a week deny or delay us? If we wait to try to work something out, is there, I mean, I know we're close to that twelve, but how close are we to that twelve? Is there any way that we can resolve this to keep it here to save the program? And if we not, if we don't, we will be kicked out of the program?
In 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 my professional opinion, and I've done deals and I've done transactions. And I I would tell you that there would be nothing more that I would like to do than do this deal. But I don't believe realistically as a developer, as an attorney, as a professional, that we could close the Strand deal between now, between now and the end of the year. Even, I don't even know if we could pull the documents together that are required, as you heard Mike say, that be able to do that. I I'm just, I I have to to be just that 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 director, that candidate. And again, I go back to, I I'm not sure why we couldn't close before, before that the strand couldn't close before now. I don't, I don't know all the dynamics, because we weren't putting the gap financing there. We weren't, we were saying to, like we've always said, we drew down the money based on the representations of the development team and and my understanding of what the gap financing would come and funding coming from the city that was represented to us by the development team. And so I I I just don't, in my professional opinion, the council, Commissioner, that I, we couldn't. And I think you would risk and lose and risk the program.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I want to add one more, one more question if I can. So let me, so let me ask you one question. One week we're talking about just to kind of look into this. And because I believe the LA deal regardless, they they're already in the process right now, so we're talking about a week. So we're talking about that by next Thursday. Because I see, you know, why can't we look at both and still, if it doesn't work out, we definitely don't want to lose this task credit either. So meaning what would a week, what's the impact when it seems like it's already in process?
Michael, Michael, are you on, maybe you you can answer the question. I, Commissioner, think that we we we're cutting it really, really close. And I don't think we really could afford a week, because we've been doing this for two. uh, because we've been doing this for two and two years, and I don't see, there's nothing, if, if, if I saw documents and I saw closing calls happening, I could say, well, look, maybe that can happen, but from where we would be starting from to get to this point, I just, I, I'm, I just don't believe it will happen. I just can't. I just don't, because I don't know what has changed with the Strand development team.
But the question, but the question is simply, I understand that I want a tax credit and us, um, as an agency not losing that, but it's really by next Thursday, um, you're saying that because of that happens, that they won't be able to close in L.A., in L.A. if it doesn't work out somehow? I'm just.
I, I, I think America, America could explore more, because this team is involved in, in the transaction. But I think you put this all for a week, to say we'll come back to you. When you decide to come back, there may not be a deal there. And then you're stuck, you're stuck with no deal with Strand, and no deal in L.A. Task credits will be recaptured.
And, and, and if I, if I may, again, again, this is Mike Schiffer, um, uh, Venable. Um, the, the transaction in L.A. has a, a second half component that's go, that would be going on simultaneously with it. That half, the fact that that second half component was going on is what actually positioned that deal to potentially be able to close on such an accelerated timeframe. And, and look, in my judgment, if a three or four week timeframe is wildly accelerated, uh, losing a week on that would make it very, very difficult to near impossible to get done. The other concern with it is if we had to slow down for a week, there's a fair chance of that, um, uh, hospital would decide to move forward simply with the other side of their transaction, because they are not going to risk that side of the transaction not closing. And if we can't close simultaneously with them, they are not likely to close the transaction, because the two would have to deal with together. I, I really believe that if we lose a week on that transaction in jeopardy. And, and, and I, and I can't underscore more my honest belief that even if the Strand transaction was fully ready to be financed now, I do not believe that I could close a transaction between now and December, um, thirty first, um, uh, which is a weekday, uh, in light of, of, of the time it would take for a real estate finance transaction that, uh, uh, might to be done in a new market transaction. So, so, so I guess one of the things I, just in my judgment, is that even a week, if we got a week from now and the Strand was far enough along, I don't think that it would make any difference. Because I don't think we could close the transaction by twelve thirty-one, so we would have to hope for some exception from the C D F I fund, something exists.
Thanks, Mike. So let me just say a few things, and then I know Slover has some questions, and, and I'll check you. Um, and I think everyone's right in saying that this was a, this was a deal that was discussed both in the D C H E board meeting, uh, but also, uh, at, and the emergency board meeting, uh, on the twenty-third of November. Um, and in between that time, and specific directions were given, uh, to, uh, the D C H E team uh, on conversations, uh, that, you know, some of us would have liked them to have, uh, with, uh, the Strand group. Uh, I, again, I don't know how earnest those conversations were. I suppose, I'm assuming they were. Uh, I hope since it's mute their devices, that'll be helpful, maybe if yours, Merrick. Great. Um, and so, I, I, I recognize that, uh, we have quite a dilemma, but I am moved by the, even call it the plea, uh, by the Deputy Mayor, um, who's, um, organization has been involved, uh, in the other end of this Strand, uh, transaction, uh, attempting, and I don't know the inner workings, uh, to solve, uh, the gap that we're talking about. So, um, I'm pretty sure he can disclose all the negotiations that are occurring, but I'm going to assume that when he makes this plea, he's making it, uh, with a, with some knowledge, uh, in his background um, about, uh, the gap, uh, and ways and ways the gap to be closed. So, so I'm confident that that could happen. The big question, however, remains is, even if, uh, the Deputy Mayor was to come up, or the developer was to come up with the sources, uh, to close the gap, whether or not we have sufficient time, uh, to paper it, for want of a, for want of a better word. And so I've heard, um, timing of a week, uh, coming back for an emergency meeting in a week. I think a week is just too long. Um, today is Wednesday. Um, you know, I would suggest that we should give the Deputy Mayor some time to explore, but, uh, not enough, not a long amount of time to put the, the additional deal the, the deal we have in hand, uh, in jeopardy and the program in jeopardy. And so, uh, what I'd like to suggest is, uh, that we come back to the drawing board, give the Deputy Mayor a few, few working days, maybe three working days, uh, to, and I'm going to ask him to get personally involved in trying to, uh, find a solution, and then we get back together on Tuesday morning, uh, and then emergency session, um, to, uh, again, uh, present this resolution. That's my opinion. Um, I hear, um, I, I hear the plea from the, from, from the Deputy Mayor. I, I actually would like to suggest that we do it on Monday afternoon, uh, rather than, than Tuesday. So there isn't, you know, seven days, uh, that's, that elapses before we address this issue again. And so, so Merrick, uh, and Tyrone, I'd welcome your thoughts on this.
Um, Mr. Albert?
Uh, yeah.
So I've got a question about that, um.
Can you hold one second, Commissioner Talafaro? I just want, uh, Mr. Malone to respond first.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I, I, I respectfully believe, while I understand what you're saying, as I said, I respect, uh, the Deputy Mayor's position. I sat in that chair, he sits in now. I respect that, and I would probably be that, I would feel that way. I just don't, and again, I go back, my professional opinion, Chairman, is that there, that we will not be able to, to close. And I think that if, if you're willing to risk the program, uh, certainly, you know, I, but I just, I just, I can't, I, 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 I would be lying if I told you I thought we could make this happen. And I, I, and I want to. God knows I wanted to do that. I, I mean, I, I, I thought the Strand was what's going to be one of the best projects we ever invested in. And I can't for the life of me figure out why, over the, we got this allocation, we agreed to do it two years ago. Uh, we were all in, and here we are, and we still not close. And I don't see any of the signs or things that would make me think that things would change between now and the end of the year. I just don't, and I, 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 I'm sorry, but I, I have to be professionally, uh, uh, candid about that. I, I mean.
I'm not asking us to wait until the end of the year. I've, I've, I'm, I'm asking for a, a, a delay in two working days.
Oh, Mr. Chair, you're asking, you're actually asking, what, three, three, three business days, right? So Thursday, Friday, and all of Monday, and back Monday afternoon?
Or half of Monday, yeah.
Yeah, okay. So, I mean, I, I would have to, honestly, I would have to defer to, I understand what everyone's saying. I don't, I don't disagree with anyone, um, at all. I, I do have concerns on both sides that, you know, could be for the district project, yes. Um, but do we run the risk of losing? Yes. Um, I don't know, Mike, do you think that we, we, two and a half business days? Losing two and a half business days impacts or impacts? And we can't, and, and one thing we can't do, Commissioners, um, we can't speak for the group out in L.A., how they will feel when, when we go back to tell them, um, that, um, that we haven't had.
That's correct.
So, so I, I understand. I, I, I'm, I'm fine with, I'm fine with, hey, let's, if you, if you want to make a decision on Monday afternoon, um, but let's all understand exactly what we, what we're dealing with and the decision that the board is, is faced with right now, um, in terms of this particular, um, transaction.
And Mike, you may want to chime in.
We can arrange that special meeting for Monday now.
So let's have Mike, uh.
Yeah, sorry. And, and, and answer to the question that was asked about the, the, the timing, is I think that if we told the other side that we were gonna have to put us on hold until Monday afternoon, there'd be significant concern on that side. Because in my judgment, they all, and we all recognize that the timeframe we're already operating under is very short. Um, I know that it may seem easy to say, well, what's a few days delay? Um, you know, in my, honestly, in my judgment, every day that we have here is, is, is critical in moving this thing forward, uh, under a timely manner. And so unless we're able to continue to proceed with them, I, I think there's a chance that they may, um, move forward without us. Or I think there's a chance that even if they decide to wait for us, that, that it could put it at risk. I can't promise you that we couldn't get it done, but I would have a great deal of concern.
Commissioner Talafaro? Antonio, you wanted to ask a question?
Answer a question? I'm leaving the meeting, because they playing.
Uh, let's go back to Commissioner Slover, and then Commissioner Fodcheck here, and then we'll probably get a Talafaro again.
Um, I just wanted to.
No, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm back. I just want to know how long had this been on the, on the book? Hello? Hello?
Merrick, can you answer the question?
How long has it been on the book?
Yeah.
We, 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 the Strand applied in June of twenty eighteen. Development team applied in twenty, twenty eighteen, June of twenty eighteen.
So you gonna try to rush something off the Commissioners, because you had two years to get it done, so we could, so now you want to rush?
No, I, we, we, let me, Commissioner, it's not us, uh, getting rushing. It's the, we need to, we, we allocated this for the Strand development team. We make our tax credits available to the developers, and once they get their financing in place, then we allocate. So, so while we were waiting for them, um, uh, to, to, to do that, we deployed all of the, all of the allocation, but that's six million dollars for the Strand theater, which we all wanted to do. And, uh, and now we have to deploy this six million elsewhere or risk the program of losing, losing our program and our inability and, and risk the ability of getting future allocations um, in the, in the, um, in, in the future, that we can apply to district, uh, district projects. Um, so.
I understand that, but you had it on there for two years. Now, and when it comes to the end of it, you want to rush through it?
No, no.
No, that's not right.
Commissioner, that's not accurate at all. I'm sorry. That, that's just not the way, the way the process is.
I would send them up. You think I'm bullshitting? I'll send something to, I'll, I'm really calling some shit.
Christ, mute.
I'm done.
You had a question, and then Commissioner, uh, I'll check you.
So I just want, I just wanted to back, back, and I, and I, and I, look, I recognize what everybody's trying to do here, and, and I think Merrick said it on a number of occasions, that we would love to be supporting the Strand project. I'm sure D C H E would be loved to be supporting the Strand project. But I think our first and foremost concern needs to be saving the program. Um, when I was on the D C H E board, as I said before, in two thousand and ten, when we launched this program, the idea was to, for fee generation. So there is, there is significant fees that generated through supporting the loans and all the rest, and that was really why we launched this back then. Supporting DC projects is a great benefit, but again, the core reason that we put this into motion was to generate outside revenue to support the agency. So we need to keep that front in our minds as we walk through this. So, again, uh, referencing the November twenty-third emergency meeting, which we had on this very topic, eight of the nine Commissioners, we all sat around and discussed this, and were presented with the situation. And at that time, it was, I believe, a clear directive from D C H A board that we wanted to pivot to this project, because we wanted to save the program, and that we felt that we had done everything we could possibly do to wait for the Strand project. So, I get, well, I get that we want to support DC projects, but if, if we miss this one, we won't be able to support any DC projects in the future, because we're not going to get another allocation. And again, our core mission, what we are responsible for, is generating revenue for D C H A. That's what we need to do. So we need to make sure we keep an eye on the ball, and the ball here is saving this program. So, again, we had a long conversation November twenty-third about this very issue. So here we are, and at that time, I believe we actually wanted to vote on this. The Commissioners at the meeting asked, requested that we be able to vote, but because we hadn't noticed the, uh, the meeting, or we hadn't noticed the resolution, we weren't able to vote. So, I, I, again, I, I just want to make sure that the board keeps an eye on what our responsibility is.
Commissioner Slover, Commissioner Fodcheck here.
Um, so what is, uh, what is Dudley's role in this?
This is Renaissance Equity, um, partnership. And their role, uh, so, oh, Dudley, Dudley has worked as part of the, they help with the, uh, seeking the investment, uh, of the tax, you know, of the tax credit. They were the, the entity that, um, actually, uh, uh, they're the actual investor. I mean, essentially, they're the investor. Dudley is the investor.
So do they have confidence in the Strand project?
They don't have confidence in the Strand project that it will close at the end of the year. In fact, that's who we have been hearing from, when we have talked to them about the extension. And not only did we, we talked to them about the extension, um, they don't want to have any recapture either. And we also had members of the Strand development team.
And Merrick, I'm sorry, I'm sorry to interrupt, and I know everyone wants their information, but we're teetering on the, on the edge of, of confidential information, so, um, I ask that you tread lightly. I'm, I want to make sure that the Commissioner gets the answer that they want and need, but at the same time, be mindful.
And, and I'm only, I'm, I'm saying that the, it, of the investor, which is Dudley, has indicated to us that they will, they would not extend this in, in terms of the time. Um, and, uh, and in fact, um, have had discussions with the, uh, Strand development team.
So since November twenty-third, did they lead the conversations with the Strand development team, or was that D C H E?
No, we did not, we did not lead. They, the, uh, the, the conversations have been separate. Uh, their conversations with us, um, have, have been, uh, as the, have, have been separate. Um, although we, uh, and they've had separate discussions that I'm aware of with, with the, uh, Strand development team. Um, with respect to, uh, the extension, uh, with respect to, uh, the, uh, historical tax credits, those are, those are, uh, those are discussions they have with the Strand team.
Okay, because I think, uh, you know, the Commissioner before me said that, uh, we want to be supportive of the Strand. And, and that's just what we're asking for, is a final ability to go to the Strand, to present it to them. If you're saying that the partner, the investor, uh, is, you know, is still willing to take a look at that, then I, I would, I would say that we could use a little bit more time in order to really have that conversation, uh, before proceeding with the closing in L.A. Um, so I don't know, Chairman, if.
So, so Commissioner, if you, Commissioner, I'm not, you might have misunderstood me. The, the investor Dudley has indicated to us quite clearly that they are out of time uh, with respect to, um, the Strand investment, uh, and they do not want to, uh, risk, uh, 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 a recapture. Remember now, they, they had to go, they drew down from another investment, uh, entity, uh, which is Valley Bank. So between Valley, Valley Bank and, and Dudley, if, if Dudley were to say, uh, we, we, they would give more time or figure out how to do this or fund the gap, there would be, I, I think that, that's a, that, that, and in fact, I know we went to Dudley to ask them, did they have any, or were they aware, or did they have any tax credits that they could reserve, uh, for, uh, uh, to. were they aware, or did they have any tax credits that they could reserve uh, for uh, uh, to add for the three million? They didn't, they had allocated all theirs. And, 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 and Commissioner, what I would say to you is, is that I really believe that we would be able to, after we, we close, we would be able to, to, with our assistance and with our consultants that we've worked with, to find this deal across the country, that I believe we could find allocations for, for the strand theater. I really do believe that, and I've worked, and we would work hard to, to help with that.
So, and that's where I, I just kinda, you know, the one more swing at it. That's what I don't understand. And to the chairman's point, if we wanted to close the window further, come back um, or uh, Chairman to give um, you know, I don't know if the resolution could be updated, but to give uh, direction that, you know, before we were to move on, I see you thinking as I uh, say this, but before we were to move on to the LA project to have sessions with uh, the DC project. Um, again, it's a multimillion dollar project in the district. It would create jobs in a neighborhood that needs both jobs and amenities. Um, and we're trading that away uh, for uh, a hundred and eighty thousand dollars, which seems like a lot of money, but is not much more uh, than what uh, we are trying to address in the gap. And I'll stop there because I know Mr. Mays would get a little skittish about me going further uh, into a negotiation.
Well, Commissioner, I would, I would say this, at this point, a hundred and eighty thousand dollars is quite meaningless. I mean, it is and it isn't. The most important piece of this is preserving this program. I, 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 I understand the fees, that's not, the fees are, 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 right now, given the magnitude of where we are, the fees are really immaterial. What is material is the preservation of our program so that we don't, we don't lose the opportunity to get additional credits for, for future projects that I know you would want to do.
So Merrick and um, and John, let me ask the question of both of you. It's Wednesday afternoon at 3:00 PM approximately. If we wanted to give the deputy mayor forty-eight hours to uh, do his due diligence with the developer, the investor, the with you Merrick, uh, and regroup here on Friday afternoon, is that too much of a risk?
You, you have heard from Michael, I, I, and I, I tend to concur with him. I'm hoping that if, if, if the signal is that we're waiting and they get skittish, it, 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 it uh, it, it won't matter. And uh, and, and I'm, and, and I'm, I, again, that's my professional opinion, that's not my first rodeo. And I'm just suggesting that at this point in time, uh, that's the risk you run. I, certainly I don't make the decision, that's a, it's a board decision, but I think you've heard from Michael, you've heard from me, and that's, and that, that's, that's, that's the risk we run.
Well, and Chairman, what I was actually, if I may, what I was actually asking for, if there was a way that we can, you know, include some kind of provision in the resolution that would actually allow them to move forward, but, you know, after that forty-eight hour period. Um, and I, I would just need some, um, you know, comfort level with uh, uh, Mr. Malone, that we would actually come to the table with the development team at the strand to see if that can be hashed out. So- Almost as if this, the authorization was for an authorization that kicks in in forty-eight hours if DCH comes to the table with the development team and DEMP to try one more time for the strand.
Commissioner Fajek, yeah, just being, I don't think the LA group would, would move forward, being in there, because you could come back and pull the rug out from under them. So more than likely, they wouldn't do anything until they got a full resolution of, or a full support from, from us. So doing a resolution like that, I don't think would really impact the, impact their decision. So I would probably suggest, don't do a resolution in that regard, but just come back on Friday with something more formal. Cause they're not gonna, I'm, what I'm saying is LA is not gonna do, they're not gonna, if I was on the LA side, I wouldn't do, I wouldn't do jack, because if you come back in forty-eight hour, if I do anything and you come back in forty-eight hours and say we're not funding you, you know, I've lost forty-eight hours where I could have been doing something else. So I would probably just say, let's, if you were willing to reconvene in forty-eight hours or reconvene. I, I, I see everyone's face, I don't, I don't know any, I don't have an answer for this, because I, I, I mean-
I, I think reconvene, I, I think-
Let me, let me-
Executive Director, I think that's, that's, that's fair. I'm not, I think that's the right tone to make. I understand this is still a public meeting, we're still hashing this out, and we need to discuss how we're going to communicate that with the LA, to the LA group.
Yeah, I, 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 I would also add is that because they knew that, 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 you know, we were trying to get, you know, that we were at a decision point, I'm sure they're gonna uh, want to talk what happened here uh, today. Uh, and I, again, I, again, I, I, we would really be able, I really personally believe we'd be fine, able to find money for the strand uh, going forward. I just, I just don't believe that we would be able to close by the end of the year and preserve our program. And I think that would be the end of the new market tax credit program in the, in the District of Columbia. And it would be unfortunate because we are one of the, we're one of a few housing authorities in the nation that have successfully, that is considered CDFI and have successfully al- al- allocated uh, credits. That's why we've been able to get so many is because of our past performance, so.
I, I would recommend to the, to the board that it reconvenes concerning this particular resolution rather than taking a vote on the resolution that this was.
Would that be on, Mr. Chair, would that be on Friday at your suggestion?
Uh, ab- absolutely, um, or sooner. But I think we do owe the deputy mayor um, the ability to at least uh, intervene on behalf of the developer and, and DEMP to see if there is a local, if, if these funds could be used locally. Uh, and I also agree with our general counsel that, and Tyrone, that having a vote that hunts it or makes it conditional to uh, a local action will just send the wrong signal to uh, the folks in LA. So I would, I propose postponing the vote on this for another forty-eight hours.
One last question I have, Mr. Chair, and this would be of Merrick in reference to Dudley. Do, are they, would they be, and, and, and deputy mayor, would they be a part of this discussion? Um, because ultimately, um, you know, they're, they're, they're funding um, the discussion between the DC developer and, um, and, and DCHA. Would Dudley be involved?
I, 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 I think they should be. I, I would, I would assume that-
I'm just making sure that they, I'm just making sure that, okay, I just wanted to make sure that they are, they are a part of that conversation. So everyone hears the same thing at the same time. Um, so then everyone will be able to make an educated decision from, from, from those, from those points that are being made. Mr. Deputy, Mr. Deputy Mayor, is that suffice?
Oh, no, I would, I would, yes, I would absolutely wanna have them as part of it in order to know that we can move forward. And uh, Chairman, if we were to reconvene at, on Friday at three, uh, I'd be confident that it'd be one of our shortest meetings, because it would have my full support to move forward and um, make sure we don't jeopardize the uh, the program.
How do you know we available?
Wow.
Well, that was-
What I don't understand, and I'm gonna talk and go on rocket, because once again, it's an insult, and I'm a resident commissioner, and I've asked a thousand times, can I talk? So now that I'm talking, Malone, I appreciate the learning abilities that we have working in this project. Mike, I wanted to tell you, I'm glad that you're here today to see how we work. I don't even know why we having this discussion, because if, if, if the deputy mayor wants us to whatever he want us to do, let him do it. So when he does it, and it doesn't work out his strategic way, then allow the state to be held accountable. The mayor just say that she played a game, a strategy, and I don't mean a game game. Her strategy didn't work, the District of Columbia lost the deal, and we'll move on. Because it's the first time we ever had a type of deal like this, but you wanna be a state. Now, if the states are doing this and you're a baby on this one, then we need to also tell the mayor and Eleanor, let's readdress whether or not the District of Columbia is ready to be a state. And we need to look at the trends of the housing authority as an independent agency and all other agencies to see whether or not we meet the criteria to work as a state. We don't have a governor. We work with a city council, we've been doing it forever, and nobody should get upset with John because he's used to not working with the state unless it's the city and somebody else, not the housing authority. So why is there's a problem? If I've been on the board for fourteen years and can't never talk, and I'm done the research on DCH, and Mr. Counselor, it's not a joke, and why the joke, when you sit on your boards, I don't, this is not a joke, it matters to me. I've made it very clear that I'm leaving this board. I've made it very clear what my demands has been. Now, if it doesn't mean that I can speak to this board, maybe I need to take my concerns to Congress. To the Housing Jurisdiction Committee, because this board is not listening to resident commissioners. You want us here as a body, and when we meet your needs, we can talk. You have the president of Lincoln Heights who have talked about the strand, the strand, and she's still on the new community. John, John, you can teach from everybody, you have a better passion. So Ms. Malone, who's been with the strand, who has talked over and over, and I've read all of the minutes from her, but she said today on video, but she can't talk. Neil, you need to reassess, find out whether or not resident commissioners really should be on the board. Greg Mays, you need to check with Congress about 24CFI. Is it a joke? And then this board need to even be reestablishing some new rules and regulations, because I'm confused. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. So I, I, again, I can't see the jack. I, I don't see if there's additional uh, requests uh, for speakers. Um, again, I'd like to recommend uh, to my colleagues that we table the vote on this until Friday at 3:00 PM. Is there any vehement objections to that?
No, because every, no, there's no rejection, because everybody will make it, but you can, that, we'll all make it to that, because we don't have time to think.
Can it, can I just get one question? Sure. If I'm on the other side of this transaction, and again, I think we can all just stop saying we wanna make this transaction work, because I think we all do. I'm just worried about the program, and I'm worried about um, the timing, and I'm worried about what message might be sent to the group on the other side of this deal. If I knew the meeting was happening right now, and my expectation was that I was gonna get some positive response today, and the team called me and said, oh, we're gonna have to delay two days. I, I'm, and, and I'm looking at the same timeline and the same constraints as well. And I'm, so now we're talking about Friday afternoon at three. So they've lost, so they're basically not gonna be able to get up and running for Plan B until next Monday for all intents and purposes. And so if I'm then, I'm, I'm going somewhere else. I, I, I got to. So that's my concern about, we're in a time crunch, and I'm just trying to be realistic in understanding what forty-eight hours doesn't seem like a lot of time, but if I'm, again, if I'm on the other side of this transaction, this is not a good sign to me. And I have to react, my responsibility is to get my project done, so then I have to go find a solution.
So I, I, I hear you, Commissioner. You know, forty-eight hours is certainly not sufficient time for, I don't think sufficient time for, you know, the folks in LA to go find an alternative and nail it down, unless they already had one in the hopper. Um, but, you know, I, I hear where you're coming from. The longevity of the program here at DCH is uh, important, but I also believe that uh, we have a responsibility to, I, at least I think I have a responsibility to give the deputy mayor's office uh, some time uh, to see whether or not the, the transaction that we're talking about, the strand theater, is viable. And come back on Friday afternoon, uh, with one way or the other. Any other questions or comments? So we will table uh, this conversation until Friday at-
I won't be, I won't be attending Friday, because I'm not gonna postpone prayer anymore, so I won't be attending, so you can just send me the minutes. And I would just go along with your colleagues, because I won't be there. I'm going to pray this Friday. I miss too many Fridays, start praying, accommodating, because I wanna be a professional person. And knowing that when I got on this board, I knew the type of meetings I was gonna have. And I have, I have a mother too, and I've also put her aside. And I shared that with Bill Slover yesterday. This DCHA board is not like the rest of your boards, it's an independent board, and I know our receivership. This is the first time that nobody can ever come anywhere, and Neil, you know it too. And I really appreciate you and your leadership navigating this board. You have done a good job. But I won't be there Friday. Just give it to me in minutes and do it in twenty-four hours. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, so.
Hello, hello, hello?
Yeah?
It's Deborah Fraser.
Hi, 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 yeah, we're, we're gonna open it up for public comment uh, shortly, uh, so you'll, you'll get a call. Um, but uh, commissioners, uh, we will reconvene on this issue at 3:00 PM uh, on Friday. Uh, Alicia would send out uh, a meeting invitation. So this is the part of the meeting that we uh, go into-
Wait, 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 excuse me, excuse me?
Yes, Deborah, we can hear you.
Hello?
Yes, Ms. Razor, we can hear you.
Okay, um, a few comments as the one resident who uh, was able to comment, um, and I will be quick. It seems to me, one, that the over, whatever was the team that was doing oversight on the development team dropped the ball. So for two years, I'm hearing the discussion that this um, um, strand applied in twenty, twenty eighteen, and something happened in twenty sixteen, and then in June of last year, you looked at that and you gave it a time, and now um, it's late to do that. It seems that administrative oversight of the whole process was lacking. I don't see where two days or one day is going to make any difference. I think the board is giving itself enough time and the circumstances warrant for you to make the decision today. That you would put by this delay, the hundred and sixty million uh, of the a new market tax credit in jeopardy in the hopes of earning a hundred and sixty thousand dollars is a joke? And that you will put the entire program in jeopardy for not doing day-to-day oversight? You guys knew in twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen that the strand development team was not up to the task or was not meeting its goals and deadlines. That was the time to do that. Since you have not, to give yourself two more days, what you haven't to do, what you have not accomplished in two years or six months or nine months, is ridiculous. I think that's one hand washing the other. Someone also said that, how is the LA project all set to go forward if we haven't already said quietly to them that we will back your deal? So it, it all smacks of poor administration, poor oversight. If the deputy mayor was able to do something, that position should have stepped in long before now. As a layperson, I hear all the discussions, but overall, it seems to me that the development team is lacking, and whoever had oversight in it is lacking, I need to say that, because our personal interests are, we still have development projects happening in DC that are not going forward. For what? Perhaps the lack of capacity, lack of oversight. What are the deliverables, what are plans? And it seems to me, from my little experience at the DC Housing Authority, was a corporation, you'd be out of business. Because of the same kind of convolutedness, this back and forth, this beating the horse, it's bad. Let's not do that, let's go ahead. I think you all have more than enough information to vote now. Cause as has been said, you're going to jeopardize the LA project during a community deal. Strand has already made their decision, because they're not getting back to you. What's gonna happen in two days? Strand has already made their decision because they're not getting back to you. What's going to happen in two days that you haven't done in two years? So for not knowing all the dislingo and everything, it's clear to me that all the principals have failed in their ability to manage this. Vote on it and as running commissioner says, vote on it and move on. Friday, you will probably come to the same decision you've come to now. That's my comment as a community person.
Thank you so much, Deborah. So this is a, we're going to turn, open it up for public testimony. Remember, residents have five minutes for comment and non-residents have three minutes for comments. I'm going to turn this segment of our program over to our vice chair of the board, Commissioner Ken Council.
Good morning, all. We're getting ready to have our witness to speak and our first one that we have is Ms. LaNell Proctor. Ms. Proctor, are you still online? Okay, let's go to our next one. Angela Owens. Is she online?
Angela Owens, you can press star six on your phone.
Okay, Ms. Owens, I see you. You got to unmute yourself.
Okay.
Hi, Ms. Owens, we can hear you.
Okay, we can hear you now. You can, you can start now.
Hi, my name is Angela Owens and I'm a H C V P holder. I want to commend Mr. Garrett for all the work that he's done with D C and this is best for you. I thank you very much. Upon leaving my new apartment, it took me a little while. I'm a senior. It took a while because they were like misleading and no responses from people that I was required to email for answers. I'm not the only person that's going through this. I need some responses from your case manager or, or your person that does the vouchers and the hats and everything. I mean, it was a back and forth thing, so it gave me a lot of anxiety. I did get my apartment. Thank the Lord. I appreciate it. And for those who did work with me, I appreciate them very much. There's also another thing. Communication is key. I've been in the administrative assistant business for a little while, over thirty years, and I've never had anything like this to go through or not go through, which was very, very difficult for me. I'm glad I did get my part. Deadline date for the landlord, the new landlord. And I was thinking that I was not going to get my part. As of how long it took me, it took me almost three months. That was a difficult, difficult thing. I hope this goes through as a form to inform everyone who's involved in trying to get another tenant to move, transfer to a different area because the weight used to live, which was on Minnesota Avenue, next Ward seven. Ward two, which is beautiful. I appreciate it. I have helped out H A and that was the only reason why I believe it went through at the deadline. There may be twenty people on the briefing. It took them. And of course, everyone does not, can't remember everything. Bonding and, and a response from the people that supposed to help you not always go through. I also to address the reason why it need as long as I did. I do the stability. And easier when officers speak to someone directly, maybe things. It's, it's very difficult. My ears can't hear the way things went and I'm grateful. But please, I'll be nice for commissioners.
Twenty seconds remaining.
Yes, ma'am. Please, please address the situation. More seniors are trying to see how to handle this. Thank you very much.
You, Ms. Owens. Ms. LaNell Proctor, are you back online yet? Okay, if not, Paulette Matthews. Paulette Matthews. Okay, we'll go to the next one. Heather Day.
I'm here.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, um.
You have five minutes.
Okay, so I wanted to actually follow up on my last Board of Commissioners meeting where I was trying to send out information in reference to the ABLE program and the issues in my unit. And pretty much I waited a month to get no responses. A lot of the responses I received had nothing to do with my question. I don't even think people read it because there's a lot of side notes, sidebar conversations and everything. Right now, I'm actually at my house. Let me show you this. One moment. Which caught fire yesterday. So I'm in my house right now that caught fire due to a vent that I've been complaining about that was making noise that needed to be cleaned. And this is the result of what happened to my house. So I'm here trying to retrieve items for me and my family, which isn't much I can retrieve. My whole ceiling is gone in my house and every single room. Like I, I, I have words, but I don't really have much words. But this is a result of neglect of stuff that I've been complaining about and trying to get fixed in my house. So right now, me and my family are all in the cold trying to get resources and trying to get things together for something that could have possibly been prevented. And one of the main things, like I said, is this vent here in the bathroom, which led to my kids' room that caused this fire to come out of the top, which set my whole house on fire. So I wanted to make this call so that you guys can see that these issues, these questions, these concerns are serious and they're going on on this whole property. Luckily, everyone made it out safely, but this is, this is my house.
What property are you on, Ms. Day?
Elvin's Road, Elvin's Court, twenty-four, forty-four and a half, Elvin's Road. These are the questions. These are the concerns. These are issues that I was addressing in reference to before RAD happens. This, this, this is my house. So it's like, with, with some of the questions, some of the maintenance issues, you know, some of the rodent issues, some of the issues of us in the ABLE program, not knowing where we're going to go, what we're going to do, what's going to happen during this RAD transition. I followed up for, I sent all of the emails, informations, questions to everyone. It took almost a month to get that information back. And the answers don't even make sense. I mean, there's a lot of sidebar conversations where someone dropped the ball, copied and pasted because I see the whole conversation on how to answer, what questions to answer, and they still don't answer anything. So I'm just, I don't know.
Excuse me, can I say something, Albert?
Excuse me?
Can I say something to Mr. Albert?
It's council, council. Go ahead, go ahead.
Um, what is this? So D C H A just never came back to you with nothing?
They, they made me wait about a month and the responses they gave me, I mean, had nothing to do with it. Even with this vent, I mentioned it to them several times. I said, hey, this vent is making noise. The toilet, dirt and dust is dropping out the vent. I said, I don't have whatever this tool is. I said, can you guys clean this vent or can someone come open it? I'll clean it out myself. Oh, that's on the resident. And like even yesterday, I had everyone else, the same four minutes supervisor I spoke to about it stood there, probably to make sure I didn't mention it, but that's what happened and I didn't mention, that's what happened. That was the cause of the fire. My daughter just got out of the shower, two or three minutes before the bathroom went up in flames. She got out of the shower because she thought one of her siblings was burning up something downstairs, but she got out to guess about what's going on. She goes in the room to dry off my upstairs. He's like, I'm not cooking. Oh, wait, the bathroom is on fire.
At this point, Ms. Ms. Day, this is Aquarius. At this point, as your, as your commissioner, I recommend that you don't say nothing else on record.
For a reason.
For what reason? As the family commissioner, I've always stated to you when you was a, as when you was a resident here in Potomac Gardens, I've also gave workshops on how to testify. You have said what you need to say and you probably don't need to say anymore. And that's, that's the reason why I'm giving you, as, as if you respect me as your commissioner and if you respect me with all the emails you sent me and if you respect me and I tell the Housing Authority about prevention, respect me at this time and follow instructions. You said enough on record.
Okay.
Business.
Okay, Ms. Day, is there anything else you want to put on record?
No, thank you.
All righty.
If you need me for anything, give me a call, text me. You know how to get in contact with me. Don't do it on Messenger. Try to just text, text me. Just text, text me on my cell phone and let me know where you at and I'll come to you at some point in time today. I have, I have something for you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Aquarius.
Next, we have Peggy DeRose.
Hello? Hello?
Hello?
This is Ms. Matthews and I don't know how I stayed on this line all this time and then my call got dropped and I had to redo this. I would like to have my position. I may not right now, but before this meeting is adjourned.
No, no, let's get you out of the way before it drops again. Go ahead, Ms. Matthews, you have five minutes.
Okay, thank you so much because I've been on it from the beginning and I don't understand what's going on with Los, um, Los Angeles and Aquarius, how long she been, wherever she been. But I have some questions because sound effect sounds real good and the conversation that they were having, that was what the conversations that I was going to have today. My concern is with the, um, the cameras. Um, if y'all roll your own tapes back, I've always felt as though the cameras were like just a deterrent. Now that it came through and they have put out new cameras. Um, I, I can say that they work in a sense because as I was talking to Ms. High Tower in reference to my dog being hit by a, a guy with a motor on his bicycle and he continues to go on, that no one, if these cameras were working, even though there was three D C Housing Authority staff in the back room that I began to find out once I ran to it down to the security desk in the senior building to inform the, um, individual that was there. And I think what goes on is that they're just being trained to say when you come to them to call M P D. The reason why I'm saying that is because if you call the D C Housing Authority Police to report something, that's the first words to come out their mouth. So I'm unclear of what their function is. I've been hearing forever how short-staffed they are or whatever the case may be. But my thought process is if you work for D C Housing Authority and if you're the D C Housing Authority Police Officer, then therefore your job is to protect and serve the, the property and the residents that live there. Not every time you turn around, you're telling me to call M P D. I feel as though your job is to figure out what's the situation, try to resolve the situation, and if you need backup, then you call M P D. So I have a problem with that. I have a problem with Mr. Garrett talking about how he could be in Chicago or Los Angeles or wherever and be able to see this, that and the third. But what difference does it make if you're not going to do anything about it? Because I don't know whether or not those three officers were backing that back, looking at a camera or not. But what I can tell you about that evening on Friday when my dog got hit because of the improper enclosure that I had that I've been fighting for for two years and my worst nightmare had came through with them getting, her getting hit, but thank God not killed, that there was no one in sight. It was no police officer in sight. There was no cruise cars going on and I, and the gentleman that I spoke to, they presumed the position that they had when I first came through the door and went through the security booth to inform the guy. Being as though it's Corona going on right now, everybody should have some type of direct line to somebody. And even the security, the D C Housing Authority, well, all he really had to do was get up and go to the back, but he was referring me to call the D C Metropolitan Police. I'm clueless to why and how it's done and how he thought it was okay to do that. And so I still have a great concern. Now, far west, my, um, my enclosure that I've been wrestling with for two years, that I wound up on the fire marshal. Um, they noted the fire violation. I've been told that as of the twenty-third of, of this month, I should have my enclosure up so that's to be announced. We'll see how that works out and how that goes. Then I hear Mr. Garrett, he's talking about a lot of things and y'all wasted time, not, maybe not to y'all, but to me, trying to wait and then getting disconnected some kind of how, talking about Los Angeles and all that. I don't know what's going on with it, but I can assume that it's about money. Um, and but the point still remains, I constantly ask and so do some of the other residents, trying to figure out updates and everything in reference to Berry Farms and what that look like and where that's going and the developers. And so maybe, um, the first of the year, y'all could think about since Mr. Garrett, it's always so easy to be able to just clutter out a little bit of stuff and we move on and y'all send us home, we'll be getting off the phone and it's adjourned and all of that. Maybe y'all might incorporate something where it's though, just like you had this resolution, um, meeting every month or whatever, that y'all do something where the Berry Farms residents that scattered all over the D C area, um, you don't know what's going on with them on top of Corona, how they're feeling, what that looks like, while we sit here and play with words and language and try to go this way and that way to not make certain things happen or make it even more difficult for those who live in these conditions. Because while y'all at home and while y'all getting ready to celebrate the holidays, we're going through a whole lot of different stuff. And so I think y'all need to think about the residents, their safety, um, enjoying things in a timely manner because Mr. Aquarius said something in reference to, um, maintenance issues. We, we flew past that one too. And what, what does it mean when we're speaking of an emergency? The Housing Authority doesn't consider emergency that we consider to be the same thing. And even before Corona, it was that same way and they were never doing nothing in a timely manner. So I have a whole lot of issues because sound effect sounds real good. At the beginning, in the middle and the end of the day, there's plenty of people suffering while other people are going home with paychecks and other people are happy. And we got people who have died in the process that would never come back to Berry Farms. But while y'all trying to figure out all the rest, we need to figure out this because you know why? There's the off the cages, there's a park board, there's a whole lot coming down the turnpike. And throughout history, the way I see it, it's been so messed up and now it's time for us to get it right. You know, it's, it's time for all to drop balls and now we want to add more because of Corona and new excuses. We're human beings. It's time for us as human beings to get this thing right. We done had so many different chances and opportunities and we're still here fighting for the same thing. Just to be able to live decently or safe or be in a safe environment or for somebody to take care of something. I moved into my place where I am right now and the, the, the smoke detector. I moved into my place where I am right now and the, the, the smoke detector wasn't even connected in the wall to for it to have gone off. So when we thinking about a lot of things as well, we gotta think about safety and all of that. And we can't just keep having expecters. I don't know why the Department of Regulatory Affairs don't do it, but then again, I know because we're so separated, uh, and, and division and stuff that happens. That's why all this stuff going on when we should all just try to get together and work together. But we can't do nothing with this because that's because of that and this and that. And at the end of the day, it's just so many people suffering and we're steady going through the same era go around and we're steady fighting for the same things that they were fighting for in the fifties. And we just can't seem to get it right. And I still want to know about an update from Berry Farms. And can y'all please consider the fact that y'all come out with y'all resolutions? And we don't have kids and stuff that's in school right now or whatever and half of us are working from home. But a lot of times people don't get to say what they need to say because y'all take up that time that y'all use for resolutions. Y'all give us five minutes. Y'all give other people three minutes. You hardly address our issues. You send us on and then you don't come back the next day and, or the next month and address those issues. So maybe can y'all consider this stuff in 2021, please? And thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next person is Ms., uh, Peggy DeRose.
Hi, yes, this is Peggy DeRose. Peace and blessings.
Okay, you have five minutes.
Okay, I'd like to ask you about the Rad. Um, very, they gave out information, but the information isn't easily understood. And the information that they gave out, I know that there's a lot more information that I need to be reading. Now, I talked to all the residents in the building that I'm in, which is, uh, I think I talked to like eight people. And we all want to know, which they could not give us the answer to. They said they gave a promise that's gonna take with the renovation up to eight weeks and no longer than 59 days. All the residents here would like to know all the promises that they did make, that they haven't followed up on. If, are we gonna get that in writing? And everybody would like to have that in writing. And, uh, I think most, most of it is because a lot of things get said and it's not followed through, even though there's a promise behind it and there's a lack of trust.
What property are you speaking of?
Uh, what property?
Yes.
Ontario Apartments, um, Mr. Counsel.
Okay.
And we don't know the move out date. I know I've asked, some other people have asked several times, what's the move out date? Where will you be relocated? And what's the move in date back? They don't know the move out. We haven't been given a move out date. They, I ask, we not only me, everything I say, the rest are asking it too. The relocation, where will it be relocated? Uh, they said, well, it could be a hotel. It could be another property. It can be in another place housing. Uh, we don't have any, um, uh, location yet. That seems very strange to me that they don't have anywhere, no list of locations when it's supposed to be so close to the date. And how much notice are we going to be given? That was asked also. I said, will it be a week? Will it be two weeks? Will it be a month? They didn't know how much notice they're going to give us. I think 30 days, it should be at least 30 days, because some people can't just pack like that in a few days. Some of us are older now and we're slower. Myself, I'm aging. I'm a senior. We need time to get all this stuff together and label it. So I don't know what, how, how, how much notice they're going to give us. And I think as most of the seniors here, they're really concerned about that. They keep asking, well, how long am I gonna have? Uh, is it a week? And the stress level is very high here because of these unanswered questions. And some of them have already got high blood pressure and everything. I think about people's health, their state of mind, their peace of mind. This is not giving them no peace at all. The other thing is when I was on the call and we only had two calls. Um, and I, I don't know, when they do this, who's gonna be the owner of this property? I know they mentioned something about the LLC entity created by housing, which is going into partnership with another unknown investor. They didn't know who that was. So how can you go forward with the project when it's been stated that you have not identified our secured investors? Now, I know LLC is a, it's a private company. Somebody owns it and it, and LLC is for profits. So who owns this and who's gonna be the owner after this done? When I ask those questions, they don't know the answer. I don't understand why there's no answer. Okay, the other thing is, um, the last thing is Thanksgiving. Somebody's talking, if they could just mute, maybe you can hear me. That would be really great. I, I, I've been on since, uh, one o'clock and it's 3:30. I like to be heard.
Mr. James Herbas, will you mute yourself, please?
Thirty seconds remaining.
Okay, well, I guess that's counting a minute while they're getting muted. For Thanksgiving, I didn't get a tur- that did not happen the whole one to three o'clock, but now that the residents are on, you can't hear anybody. Very important too. I didn't get a turkey for Thanksgiving. The reason being was they stopped by, somebody knocked on the door and said, we got them outside. There was no notice on the door. From what I know, they usually let you know when they're coming, that they're handing out something. I was on a Zoom call, which, which I was a facilitator, so that's why I couldn't leave and run downstairs on an unannounced call. So I called the next day and she said, when somebody comes over here, they'll bring one. They never brought one. But that's okay. I mean, I still ate and everything. I just thought that, uh, that was kind of odd, that it wasn't really correct. I'm not mad about it, but it could have been done a whole lot better. Okay, for real. And I just want to say, myself and the rest of us, we would like to have the same respect that is given to everybody else. I know that we're in public housing, but we do, I like to have the opportunity to plan. We like to know what a schedule is. I mean, we do keep schedules here and that's just a sign of respect. You can't just because they're there, they're gonna have to take whatever and come at the last minute and say, this is what you're gonna do. We have the plan too. And I'm just asking you to give us the opportunity to plan, to answer our questions, and what you promised, put it in the letter.
You, I would like to speak on behalf of being the family commissioner and the first resident commissioner that brought Rad to, to the attention to our board. And this is one of the problems we had, Mr. Gurd, that you constantly tell me is gonna be corrected. First and foremost, I, every Rad, uh, every community Rad is on the website. We already know that every, that we all are not computer literate. Um, as the Chair of the Resident Service Resident Initiative Committee, that nobody had respect for with me as the Chair, including my constituents. First of all, our committee made sure that there was a, um, the Rad went on everybody's door. It was brought to my attention by Sheena Foster, who was the president of Ontario prior to Ontario not even having a resident council at this time. And it's also been brought to my attention about their navigator. I was told that the navigators would have a, a, a telephone call to residents and only take their concern. That was number one. So it's obvious that was a lie because Ms. DeZero is now allowing us to have it on record. Number two, the resident engagement. I also asked that we have 28 lawyers assigned to 28 properties as we move into 2021. Because y'all may take it a joke, the games that you've been playing over the years as resident leadership would not be played no more. Ms. DeZero does have a background. She was one of the only members of the Von Goshwein Focus Group that went on record at Woodland. She is the only person that was the resident council president at Hopkins that understood that focus groups and work groups work. Ms. DeZero has a degree as well. Ms. DeZero has a background. And all of these residents who are resident leaders that say that they have degrees and say that they have a high school education and say that they're basic computer literate needs to come together and these 28 lawyers need to be signed to the properties, per property. And we can't do no more. And I told you, Mr. Gurd, if you want to be held accountable to reach out to America and do this like this to volunteers. Have somebody, because we have a group of us that we ain't COVID scared. You have people go to every resident property. They sit down with them just like the insurance man did when they went in your house and wanted you to have insurance. You have that resident sign off and we won't keep on spending time on, I didn't know, I didn't understand. It's called accountability. And accountability start from the top and it starts with organization. And when I leave this board, that is one of my goals. Last month, I asked for every lawyer that meets with Tyrone Gurd to meet with our committee. I will no longer meet with the citywide advisory board because it caused conflict and I'm leaving in six months. And I'm working on national things and it is a wrap for me. Now, Ms. DeZero, I would like for you to give me a call so I can give you some information so that you can organize Colorado, Ontario Road along with Sheena and y'all have a great focus group. Now, if you don't follow my instructions, I will call you out. Now, and you know it.
I know.
And let me say this. Now, I'm gonna give you a list of resources. By the time I leave out this board, and I know who I got on Facebook. And when I move to my next level, please do not be in front of my face in the past and you haven't read and you want to play games and you want to hold up. We cannot hold up anymore. I believe that Biden has already accepted his, is his secretary. About Tyrone and his team to get Diane Yelteau on the line. I will not meet with nobody but our board with Diane. It's too much work when you bring other people in. We already was delayed with a resident, wayman and I'm both finished. We already delayed with a resident, um, the resident, um, election, which had, under the Trump administration, in the first time in history, ruled on behalf of residents, which meant stop an election due to COVID-19, but I will continue to send my USAD food to our communities and we will continue to stand on lines and get there. But we couldn't vote in October. I'm finished. Let me finish. Now, December is around the corner. Whoever has the authority, because I don't, as the Chair, these residents need to know, when is the next resident council meeting? Congress already told you, yeah, I mean, not Congress. HUD did a waiver, the first time the HUD have ever did a waiver. Greg, you ought to check and find out whether every resident council on the, all 39 resident, uh, uh, move to work Housing Authority, did we all not have a resident council meeting? And then you need to clear out when will we have one because it's vague. It says that we will, uh, give you 2020 and you have up until December of 2020. The Board of Commissioners will be electing some new commissioners. I'm not running anymore. I've done my job and I've done it well. I'm not endorsing anybody. So what I'm saying is, you know that in 2021, for sure, you have an opening as commissioner for the family. I am requesting that the Chair of the Citywide Advisory Board begin to have meetings now. Who are you gonna put in that slot? Don't wait till it happens. Start looking for who's gonna fill that, that slot now. And now we'll move forward. Ms. DeZero, I want you to start the petition for me. And the petition we're gonna start is to find us some pro bono attorneys. Not one advocate attorney showed up at that meeting and can counsel know it.
Can I say one last quick thing?
Yes, you can.
All right, we're moving on to our next witness.
Um, Counsel, can I say something behind the court, please?
Make it plain, make it simple and quick.
Okay, I've been talking about the same issues for two years. Now you got a point to, to correct it from two years ago. Now.
I was talking, they cut me off.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I, I'm with you. This commission will tell a fair. I am with you. I've been talking about this for the last two years and I get shoved over and shoved this way and shoved that way, just like you do. But they need to learn, they, let me finish. The DC Housing Authority need to come up with some better idea before 21. Because I, I'm not a commissioner to go, I don't like to go backwards. I like to go forward. And the concerns of the residents, I have a concern. I'm a resident myself. And it's wrong how it's going right now. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, our next witness is Ms. Adams.
Commissioner Counsel?
Yes.
I just wanted to say, there is a document which addresses all those questions that were actually raised by the resident previously. I'll send it out immediately following the board meeting, but we did answer and address all those, all those questions. Um, and we have a fact sheet, um, which actually supports it. So we're not dismissing anyone's questions or their concerns. We're actually documenting them. I mean, we can send out those same documents for every single, um, meeting that we, we perform.
All right, thank you.
Then when you have, Mr. Gurd, you have this meeting tomorrow with the residents. I would like to be on that meeting too. Hello?
He heard you. Okay, our next witness is Ms. Adams. Are you there? Ms. Claudia, are you there? Ms. Frazier, are you there? Deborah Frazier?
I'm here.
Alrighty, five minutes.
Okay, this, this is Ms. Frazier.
Okay.
My testimony, what happened to our, oh, and, um, uh, if the email I was given was correct, each of you should have a copy in your email of my testimony, which goes as follows. What happened to our Housing Choice Voucher Commissioner? Why did it happen? How long has this position been vacant? When will this position be filled? If, if it's filled by the mayor, what's the timeline for that to happen? Who is eligible to apply for this position? What is the job description? It is disgraceful, but not surprising, that this board has made little to no effort to address this issue. You are reminded that the approximately 11,000 voucher holders are the majority of your subsidized housing clients. However, we're the only group whose representative is not elected. An obvious disparity and we feel a deliberate injustice. Uh, housing and resident advocates lobbied for years to even get a seat on the Board of Commissioners so that we could be represented. Your decisions, board members, impact. Hello, hello, hello? Wait, wait, wait. And who lost me? Did you lose me?
Oh, that was Commissioner. She just muted herself. Go ahead.
Okay, your decisions, board members, impact our lives and we have no say in it. We are not invisible. We are not a joke. We will not be pawned in your process. Please do not. Please do not continue to feign indifference to our plight. Please exercise your due diligence. Do your duty, follow your job description, if there are any. I haven't been able to find them directly to where it is. And do the following. One, create a mechanism for voucher holder input. Secondly, ensure that this position is filled. We will continue to advocate and, uh, do all we can to ensure that this happen because we just cannot be misrepresented and not represented at all. The community looks forward to an update on this issue at the next board meeting. So take this under advisement. Second thing is, as the director talked about the COVID and PPE preparations, what are the mechanisms by which the housing choice voucher constituents and the rad folks and Berry Farms and others are able to avail themselves of this services? Are they remote testing sites? Do we all show up at Howard University? How are you going to deal with the rest of us? Please be commissioners for the entire portfolio and not just for public housing residents, and as you heard from other residents, please be more diligent with us. For my fellow people who are testifying, another level of accountability rather than continuing to present your issues to a board that's unresponsive. Carl Racine is our DC Attorney General. He might be interested in hearing your comments as a person who can either get the board and the silos that housing authority to do what they're doing, or bring some more attention to our plight. Carl Racine, DC Attorney General, number in the phone book on three-one-one. Thank you. And we look forward to you all doing better by the residents than you have done in the past.
Thank you, Ms. Frazier. Our next witness is Mr. Umar. Okay, Mr. Reginald James. I'm sorry, Reginald Black. Patricia Malloy.
Good afternoon. My name is. My name is Patricia Malloy, Lincoln Heights Resident Council President and Chair of the Lincoln Heights Richardson Dwelling New Community Initiative Advisory Board. I am here to request that the relocation team and development team come to our virtual new community meeting on February the first, twenty-twenty-one. I have been trying for two months to get someone from DCHA to respond to me. During this pandemic, I have been given the runaround, communication is not there. The two off-site developments will be ready July and August of twenty-twenty-one. My first question, who from DCHA is monitoring the development of the Strand and the Providence Place Development? I'm very disappointed at what I've been hearing about the Strand and closing the gap. Two, Kenesha Brown, part of the relocation team, have been having conversations with DMPA and the ANC and Civic Association, but not with me, nor the residents of Lincoln Heights and Richardson. We, as residents, are your frontline. I also would like a bi-weekly update from the relocation team. We need to know how the process will take place, and when will meetings take place, in small groups or virtual? The development team, we need to know what's the plans for Lincoln Heights regarding the demo. Also, I'm very disappointed from the COVID van coming to Lincoln Heights on November the thirtieth. No communication was put out on the property. So, November the thirtieth, the van came to Lincoln Heights, but we had zero residents to go to the van. I received the call the day before Thanksgiving telling me that the van was coming to Lincoln Heights. How in the world would you send a van to a property and the agency was closed down for four days? No one was tested from the van. I also want to know, when the van do come, there should be a better communication between whoever is putting out the flyers and management. Mr. Garrett, I would like to thank you, Mr. Counsel, and Commissioner Tyler Farrell for walking Lincoln Heights. I hope you are aware of all the vacancies that we have. The staff, to me, should not be responsible for boarding up these hundred and some vacancies. We have a lot of broken windows. We have one or two families living in buildings, which I know you all are aware. My second complaint, uh, signs were put up in Lincoln Heights back in October. The signs are reading DHCD, Department of Housing and Community Development. The sign should read DCHA, DC Housing Authority. The sign says, no lauterant or illegal dumping, and it quotes an article through DHCD. Why was those signs put up? And not the signs that was supposed to been put up from the settlement from the lawsuit? Also, I would like an update on the locks that was supposed to been installed on our apartment buildings. All our apartment buildings do not have locks on them.
Thirty seconds.
The communication, since we had this pandemic, it's as though you can't get anyone to respond back to you who oversees the agency with the housing authority. To be honest, if it wasn't for Commissioner Counsel, I would not be able to get a lot of things done. I want to thank Brian Harris because he's doing so much with Resident Services. And I feel that due to this pandemic, someone should at least contact the leadership once a month to find out what's going on, what to see what we need. Thank you.
Malloy, our next witness is, uh, Reginald Black.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. You have five minutes.
All righty. All right, uh, good, good afternoon, Commissioners. Uh, my name is Reginald Black. I'm a ward for, uh, resident, also a housing choice voucher program recipient. Um, lifelong DC resident and native not Washingtonian. In addition to all of my community work, I'm also appointed to the Interagency Council of Homelessness, um, as a lived experience appointee. And the DC Housing Authority is a voting member of the Interagency Council on Homelessness. While we appreciate the voucher cap limits being raised to address homelessness, we recognize that there is an issue that remains unaddressed, and that issue is public housing, uh, which, uh, uh, realliterates my support of the resolutions to authorize the adoption and implementation of the Park Morton Equity Plan. This plan guarantees the right to return for Park Morton residents and provides opportunities for employment and ownership. To date, our city has spent over thirty-nine, uh, million dollars. Um, and Park Morton residents still don't have equity in their community. The development plan is about buildings and not people. What I value in my role on the ICH is people. I urge you, the DC Housing Board of Commissioners, to pass and ratify, um, in full the resolution to adopt and implement the Park Morton Equity Plan. If DC really is committed to racial equity, the implementation of the Park Morton Equity Plan is a model. We look to advance in the, um, in the effort of racial equity and inclusion and to make sure that residents truly have a right to return. Um, the, 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 the public housing, um, is an essential piece to make sure that not only residents can stay in their community and be able to build wealth and gain ownership, but it also is to help revitalize those who have failed through the cracks. And we have had, uh, even in our District of Columbia Comprehensive Plan, uh, uh, acts and stuff that talk about increasing the number of public housing units in the city, and to date, we haven't done that since Hope Six. So it's time for public housing residents to get the equity they deserve, the respect that they deserve, and they actually own the units, actually have opportunities for employment and to be able to build wealth and advance. Everybody talks about advancement. So that has to be spurred on, and Park Morton themselves, the residents, have come up with a plan to be able to do that. So please pass that resolution and make sure that the Housing Authority and the parties that be implement the Park Morton Equity Plan because it will promote ownership and control and equity for Park Morton residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Black. Our next witness, Miss Tucker. Mr. Bailey. Renee Bowser. Daniel.
I'm here.
And you are?
Um, my name is Renee Bowser.
Okay, you have three minutes, Ms. Bowser.
Okay, I'll try to do that. Um, good day, Director Garrett and Board of Commissioners. I'm Renee Bowser, Empower DC member, DC Grassroots Planning Coalition member, and award for ANC Commissioner. I've been focusing on the widening economic disparities in our community that are most pronounced in housing, jobs, and healthcare. As part of my efforts, I researched the redevelopment of public housing communities, really the seven Hope Six grants awarded to the district. The evidence shows that DCHA used Hope Six and now using New Communities Initiative to fuel massive displacement of black families, helping DC earn nationwide notoriety for gentrification. The mindset that the extremely poor, overwhelmingly African-American residents of public housing communities are just not worth the investment in decent living conditions and economic opportunity must change. We can chart a new course by listening to the demands of Park Morton residents to remain in their community, obtain an equity stake in their housing, and obtain job training and jobs to become more economically self-sufficient. The Park Morton Equity Plan contains these basic elements. Adopt a redevelopment plan that provides for the Park Morton residents to remain in their community. Discard the current plan that by its terms demolishes seven hundred, one hundred seventy-four public housing units, but redevelops only fifty-seven units affordable to those public housing families. Additionally, the current redevelopment plan permanently moves families off-site. In short, on its face, the current plan is a displacement plan and therefore must be discarded. There must be changes to provide Park Morton residents an enforceable right of return. Stop cropping up developers who have failed to deliver even one redevelopment housing unit in six years, even after costing taxpayers fifteen million in subsidies and prematurely displacing over seventy Park Morton residents. Stop serving developers' interests with the notion that Bruce Morton must be developed at the same time as Park Morton, when since two thousand seventeen, there have been, excuse me, two thousand fourteen, there have been two vacant buildings on the Park Morton footprint that can effectively serve as build-first sites, which would make displacement of Park Morton residents unnecessary. I urge DC, pardon me?
Thirty seconds remaining.
Okay, I urge DC, uh, the DCHA Board to pass a resolution in favor of it and implementing the Park Morton Plan. Um, we want to help change the trajectory of public housing development that has never provided one-for-one replacement of their homes. We need an enforceable right of return. A topalite equitable stake in their housing and training and jobs for economic growth. These, to obtain these goals, the DCHA Board must give Director Garrett the authority to negotiate with the Park Morton Resident Council. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bowser. Our next witness is Daniel. Are you there?
I am. Thank you, Commissioner Counsel.
All righty, you have three minutes, Daniel.
Thank you. Hello, Commissioners. My name is Daniel Del Pierlo. I work with Empower DC. Here we are at the end of another year, and the residents of Berry Farm and Park Morton still have no idea when they will return to their properties, or if they'll even be able to do so. The residents of the Melvo redevelopment still have no answers about what will happen at their respective properties. And as we hear every month, public housing residents are still exposed to lead, mold, and horrible housing conditions that threaten the safety of their health. As we move into another year, this board will once again be tasked with making decisions that affect the well-being of thousands of district residents. I would ask that this board reflect on the decisions it's made this year and evaluate if they have bit, if they have met the mission of this housing authority. We are, we are in a critical time in the city's history, and as far as who gets to live here and who gets pushed out. The failed New Communities Initiative has displaced more people than it has helped, and no relief is in sight. The, the way this city and Housing Authority have planned and executed redevelopments is simply not working. Public housing residents are being moved from one bad situation to another. As this, as this board is set to be whole again in the coming year, it is of paramount importance that the decisions you make are informed with the hindsight of this year. It is critical, in my opinion, that the decisions are, are as informed as possible and not influenced by political affiliations, especially as a new mayoral appointee is set to join the board. One specific ask I have for this board is to please be very careful before approving any demolition disposition applications. Approvals of these applications have resulted in displacement and demolition without any actual redevelopment of the properties, uh, they were approved for. Residents have been displaced without knowing what and when they'll return, or if they'll have the right to return. The demo dispo approvals have been a key lever in displacement and we've, that we've seen in this city. I would urge this board to not approve any demo dispo resolutions that don't have a doable development plan associated with it. We also need to strengthen Resolution sixteen oh six to ensure that residents affected by these resolutions have an actionable right of return. Not that the, not the option or opportunity to return, but the right to do so. Thank you, and I hope twenty-twenty-one will be a much better year.
Thank you, Daniel. Our next, uh, witness is Mr. Jordan. Are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
All righty, sir, you have.
Good afternoon. My name is William Jordan. I'm a member of the Park Morton Equity Team. I'm here to, uh, provide it a resolution to board members to review and hope that we can do that for our next meeting. Um, it is for the part approval and adoption of the Park Morton Equity Plan. It asks the Board of Commissioners to empower Director Garrett to begin negotiations with the Park Morton Resident Council to implement the Park Morton Equity Plan, and I ask that you review the resolution. Hopefully, you all received it because I did send a, a copy. Um, I also want to, um, in the, um, resolution, it also asks that the master developer for the Park Morton New Communities Project be removed from the project for failure to perform, and that that begin to unwind the project. Um, I don't know if the Commissioners received their packet, but what they should have received in their packet is a copy of the resolution for which I'm speaking, um, to adopt the Park Morton Equity Plan and to begin negotiation to empower, um, Director Garrett. It should also have a copy of the Park Morton Equity Plan. It has a spreadsheet that I did of all the new community funds and other funds being spent on this project that total over forty million dollars and produce zero units, although all those funds weren't related to Park Morton. I have an ANC resolution supports the goals and objectives of the Park Morton Equity Plan and that you review that. Um, I also included the, um, how the steering committee responded to our requests of the residents for equity, which I thought was disrespectful. which I thought was disrespectful, but I wanted you all to see that. And I also wanted you to see a copy of the MOU that we tried to do with how Director Garrett and the Authority a couple of years ago, when we recognized that this project was going absolutely nowhere and would not go anywhere, and it was time to sit down with the residents and make a move. So, I'll end by saying it's time to unwind the Park Morton Equity, I mean, the Park Morton New Communities Project. It's time for the master developer to go. We saw with the strand and the confusion around that. This is typical. This is not new. I mean, this is how it is. This is every day under Park Morton New Communities, what you all just debated. And we need to do something about it. I think Mr. Garrett and the Housing Authority and DMPAD has the resources, but if they begin to use the residents as partners and not just pieces on a board, but as partners, we will have housing now, economic development. The Park Morton Equity Plan lays out a way to get it done, and I urge the Commissioners to review their package and put this on the agenda for their next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jordan. For the record, when did you send that, and what address did you use?
I believe it was uploaded to Diligent. I think we got a note on it.
Okay, alrighty. Thank you, Mr. Jordan. Okay.
Can I make a comment?
Commissioner Slovo.
Jordan, I appreciate all the work you put into that, and I appreciate your package. And I hear you loud and clear. And it is my hope as well that I think a lot of us on this board have been asking for some clarity, particularly to the new communities projects, which seem particularly challenged in terms of hurdles in front of them, both at Berry Farm, Park Morton, and pretty much at all of them. And so, I really do think it's imperative that, at a minimum, we get a really firm understanding of where we are on these projects. It's been an elusive thing for us to get a hold of. Just simply understanding the economic gap on each of these projects has been hard to get to. Not to mention the various hurdles and the lawsuits and the off-site housing and everything else. It's just very complex. And I think, I know your group had sent out a note to some of the members of the board and requesting a sit-down. I hope we can honor that. I hope that the people, we can all sit down and hear out what your proposal is, because when something's not working as planned, it's oftentimes important to look at alternatives. So, I hope as a board, we can honor the request of Daniel and William's ask that we sit down and discuss with the Park Morton folks alternatives. So, hopefully, we can do that in January. Then, thank you for your testimony.
Thank you, Commissioner. Our next witness is Ella Bredock. Ella Bredock. Okay, next, James Shabazz. Ms. Brown.
I think Mr. Shabazz is trying to speak. He's muted, I believe.
Okay, we'll give him a minute.
It doesn't show that he's muted, so I'm not sure. I think he's having some audio issues on his end.
Ah, shit. What the hell is going on?
Okay, we hear you now.
Okay, you hear me? Okay.
Yes.
All right, all right. Start. Do I start? Oh, can you hear me? Okay. I'm here as spokesman for the Bannaker Cooperative Development Think Tank. As a... And business development, and that's residents of Park Morton. And business development is the pathway out of poverty and generational dependence on government. However, we are concerned that the Park Morton Development Plan is being ignored by the DC government, just as the Berry Farm Resident Development Plan was ignored. The idea of cooperative development and ownership is rapidly spreading throughout the DC public housing colonies. Constituents, help realize the goal of self-collective activity. This includes the recruitment and organization education of youth in public housing to prepare them for management and ownership skills. Plumbing, drywall, landscaping, electrical maintenance, even security are the training these youth need to escape the cage or the box. And spending from the tax base on this goal is a wide... And all hearings be aired indefinitely on YouTube and Facebook or other forms of social media so that workers, businesspeople, and students who are occupied during the day can study said hearings at their convenience. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Shabazz.
Mr. Shabazz, I would like to... Mr. Shabazz, this is Commissioner Van Gachri. I have truly appreciated your presentation. And hopefully, what we're looking at, and hopefully what we will get, is a Commissioner's Learning Center. And you and I have spoke about that, and I'm speaking with the mayor in reference to modeling something after PC Agenda. And our committee under the Resident Initiative Committee, we're hoping that that office that's across from Potomac Gardens Senior Building will become the Commissioners, the District of Columbia Housing Authority Commissioner's Center. And that center hopefully will be run by me, and it will be modeled after 100% tweeted in detail with DC Agenda. It would allow resident leadership, resident civic leaders to come to the center and be trained properly with the right tools in order to address our issues as we move on. As you know, you knew Dr. Howard Croft, who was an dermatologist. Ken Counsel know that Dr. Croft, I believe he was in position when Dr. Croft came to talk to the board. Mayor Williams came and talked to us. Edgar Khan has come to talk to us. Based on this same model, I am now putting this model together to move on to my next program to submit it to the Biden Administration, because this has to be a national movement. And hopefully, if Diane Yotel accept the invitation, and nobody will be invited except our board, because they have read and they will follow instructions of the chair while we work this through so we can properly get some documentation down with a group of people. We're going to invite you there because you worked with me for one year, as you know, with Potomac Gardens, with our residents, giving them vocabulary. Our residents of Potomac Gardens have been learning vocabulary. What ACC mean? If you don't know how to talk the language, how do you expect us, as resident leaders with no training, no education, and we're still been building communities? Ms. Malloy know that. She's been the chair for life with new communities. There's nobody else on it. And that's Neil Albert. Does she stay chair for life? Nobody else get to be the chair. She doesn't get to have a full body. She's the only person that's operating, to my knowledge, under two directors. And Ken Counsel knows that I brought this attention to him when he was the chair of Vice Chair the first time. I brought that, the same knowledge to Commissioner St. Jean. And she and I will still work on the projects that we've been working on, because she's been in compliance. And it's an insult when somebody asks me, what happened to Commissioner St. Jean? Jean, you come to this board talking about where she at? But when you saw it in the article, I haven't gotten one document from any elected resident council advocate stating that they supported her. And St. Jean's position, and I'm only reading what's in the Washington Post, that she is advocating for the policy of how the Housing Choice Voucher Chair gets selected. She is the first chair that went out and made sure there was a Housing Choice Voucher Committee. No other, we only had one chair. In three years, she made sure that we had a Housing Choice Voucher Committee. She did the same thing that the previous chair did. She refused to have a pack. Now, the chair before her refused too, but it became a problem when she refused. Not only that, she had talent. Her HCPP, she has a great model, and I'm taking that model nationally. And I really appreciate all of her constituents that supported her. But remember, she was appointed by the mayor. She have to follow the bylaws that is written to her, written in regards to her position from the mayor. It was written during the Berry administration. And we are all here not realizing, and that goes for you too, William, Mr. Jordan. And it goes for you too. Now, you want me to talk about equity when you and I sat on different committees and we work with different advocates together. How this come apart with residents have a vocabulary sheet to know the definition of what they're talking about? Updated. You need updated resolution to talk about, because our residents talk about outdated rules and regulations, and I'm the only person that correct them, and they still pay me no mind. But maybe they'll pay you some mind, Mr. Jordan, when I leave this board. Maybe they'll pay you some mind, James Shabazz, when I leave this board. And maybe both of you could take what I've shared with both of you and structure something so my constituents, as I move on, will be able to be educated with clarification, understanding, and transparency. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And thank you, and Commissioner Slovo, for your support of the concepts that we have introduced.
Yep, and when you own a piece, I bet you learn the rules real fast when you own.
Thank you both. Our next is Ms. Brown. Selena Brown. Is she online?
I was told that Ms. Brown would not be speaking, and she's in listening.
Okay, okay, thank you. Well, that concludes today's Board of Commissioners meeting. Our next one will be February the 10th, 2021.
Can I ask a question, Mr. Counsel? This is Ms. Malloy. When would I get a response from the request that I spoke about? Do you know when I will be able to get a response?
Mr. Garrett?
We'll be able to provide Ms. Malloy a response before the end of the day tomorrow.
Already.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Garrett.
Mr. Vice Chair, the next meeting is Friday. Right. We do have an emergency meeting on this coming Friday. I guess we'll send notice out and everything, but everybody that's on Facebook Live, hope to see you there. Just be precautious that this is COVID, and level up on your families at a distance, and just stay safe, and happy holidays. This conclude our Board of Commissioners meeting. Thank you.